I want to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, October 7th, 2019, and ask for a city reporter to please call roll.
Counselor Herrera.
Here.
Counselor Parsons.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
She is excused.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counsel President Freeman.
Here.
Counsel Reed.
Here.
Counsel Kohler.
Here.
And Youth Counselor Wolford.
Thank you all. If you are able, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, tonight, under special orders of business, we're going to turn the tables a little bit. Usually what happens when we're doing presentations is I'm making a presentation to someone in our community for the work that they have done for a special achievement, and there's so many things in our community to celebrate. But I've got three of my friends here tonight who are going to make a presentation, and I'd like to invite them up to the table here, and it sounds like they've got it well in hand, and you can introduce yourselves. Thank you for being here tonight.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council.
Please, please.
Close the mic.
Please sit and use the mics.
Yes.
Can you hear us now?
Yes. Is that okay? I can hear my voice.
If we don't sit down, we don't talk as long.
That's right.
Ah! I purposely don't have a microphone, so.
We can hear you.
So, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. I'm Sean O'Dan, the Executive Director of the Midlamet Valley Council of Governments, of which Mayor Clark is our current Chair, and I'm joined tonight with Mike Cooley, who's the Executive Director of the League of Oregon Cities, and Mayor John McCartell from Independence, who is also a past President of the League of Oregon Cities. We're here tonight to re-present an award that I understand I was one of several folks who submitted a nomination for the mayor to receive recognition before the League of Oregon Cities. And I'm going to turn it over to Mayor McCartell, who's going to tell you a little bit about the award and Mayor Clark's accomplishments that led her with this recognition.
The League of Oregon Cities represents 241 cities throughout Oregon. That means there are over 1,500 elected officials. The award, the Richardson Award, which Mayor Clark is receiving, is the penultimate award for an elected official, recognizing outstanding service not just to your community, but to our communities, not just in the valley, but all over Oregon. Mayor Clark has been on every, on everything, from transportation issues to dealing with cities. She's been on the board of the League of Oregon Cities. She's on the board of, and the current Chair, of the Midlamet Valley Council of Governments. But you know what? She's also known to mayors throughout the state as a go-to type person, as a person you can ask questions of, a person who will help you find a solution to your challenge in your community, just because it's good for your community others. And I also want to shout out for the fact that she has been the conscience for so many of us on the homeless issue in this region. This region is getting outstanding recognition for really doing stuff and really moving forward. She's gone out of her way to talk to cities, counties. She's been over to our place. She's been over to cities, big and small, talking about how we can address homelessness in this region. So it truly is a wonderful opportunity for us to say thank you and to recognize the quality leadership that you folks have in your community. Mayor and council, my name is Mike Cooley. I'm the Executive Director of the League of Oregon Cities, and we were so proud to present this, and I really hate following Mayor McCartell. He's a great orator.
We all do.
I want to say this. I think if you look in the dictionary, under the definition of selfless service, there's a picture of Mayor Clark. She has been a great friend to the league, and we are going to recruit her and have her come back. She's been a great support to myself and the leadership that's happening at the League of Oregon Cities, and just a great change agent and a wonderful person. So I am absolutely thrilled to be able to re-present this to you. So you come out here so we can give this a little applause. She's here with Mary Lou.
There we go. There's the photo op there.
Absolutely. There you go.
Okay, there you go.
There you go. Smile a little bit more. That was good.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Thank you. This is a collaborator.
Co-conspirator.
That's right.
Yeah, co-conspirator. Another co-conspirator. Saw a number of signatures. Congratulations. Another co-conspirator. I do want to take a moment, though, and recognize also some of my family is here, my husband, Kevin, who has been by my side through all of these years of service and held down the fort and been completely and 100% supportive of this crazy notion of public service. My son, Alex, and his wife Sheila are here as well. They weren't able to join us in Bend, so thank you for being here tonight. Service, community service of any kind is a family thing, and I'm very blessed to have a family that is very supportive of what I'm doing, and I'm very, very honored to work with a council that totally gets that this is all about serving you and us as a community. So, thanks, guys. You make me look good. You're awesome. And a city staff that is second to none. When I talk to mayors and councilors from across the state, many of our department heads and our city manager are all recognized leaders in their fields and talk about go-to. They are people that get called up, you know, "How do you handle this? What do you do about that?" All of you are resources, very valuable resources throughout the state of Oregon. So Kaiser is a fantastic city, and I'm privileged to be able to be part of the team here. So thank you all. So now I get to turn the tables back around and do a couple of presentations, and I want to lead off with Jane Downing and, I believe that was next up, right? Yes, domestic violence. This is, we have a community that is committed to awareness of and prevention of domestic violence. So as they get set up, I would like to read the proclamation and then introduce our wonderful speakers for here tonight. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the impact of domestic violence extends beyond individuals reaching into families and communities, and whereas in the last year Marion County has experienced four domestic violence homicide crimes resulting in the deaths of five victims... Wow, that's hard. Whereas the Marion County District Attorney's Office received 1,301 law enforcement reports that domestic violence last year filed 1,043 domestic violence cases and filed 74 juvenile dependency cases with domestic violence allegations. And whereas the Marion County Courts received 1,037 requests for protective orders last year, and whereas the Center for Hope and Safety received 30,964 contacts through their program last year and provided 6,639 nights of shelter. And whereas the Marion County Victim Assistance Division provided services to the 1,700 victims of domestic violence last year, walking alongside them and giving them a voice in the criminal justice process. And whereas we know as individuals, we can make a difference by speaking up and reaching out to help victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, together with the Kaiser City Council, assembled in regular session, do hereby proclaim August of October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and resolve to honor those who have died and acknowledge those who have survived by supporting meaningful services that create safety and hope for survivors in this community. So I will start. Would you please introduce yourself and tell us how we can make a difference working with you?
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you very much, and councilors, thank you for having us here. My name is Paige Clarkson, and I have the privilege of serving as the Marion County District Attorney. With me here today is Jane Downing of the Center for Hope and Safety, the infamous Jane Downing. You very, you don't even have to, don't even have to introduce her, I always say. And I'm privileged also today to have with me Susanna Escobedo, who is the Director of my Victim Assistance Division in the Marion County District Attorney's Office, a division that we are really proud of in the way that we serve victims and the way that we help them through the criminal justice process. So it's really unique to have partners of a criminal justice system and a social service system together before you. Jane will probably tell you this, but I like to steal her thunder whenever I can because she has a great way of telling communities that it's actually really unique that we partner in the way that we do. And we just walked the steps to Safety Walk on Saturday, and we all joined in that and really do partner in this community to make it safer. If you'll indulge me for just a couple of minutes, though, I want to share with you today what is a little bit more of a personal story. I've been working in the District Attorney's Office for over 20 years, and when I first started, I was a young, really excited whippersnapper of a Deputy District Attorney in the DA's office, and as part of my role there, I spent a lot of time at what we call our Marion County Court Annex, and that's a court that functions out by our jail. And we have two really busy dockets that function every day, and when you're a new, young whippersnapper lawyer, you draw the short straw and you go out there, and you do just piles of cases every day. And I did that a lot as a young Deputy District Attorney, and I remember when I was doing that, I was also assigned to the domestic violence team, and at that time I prosecuted personally a lot of domestic violence and intimate partner violence cases. And I would go out to the annex, and I would go with my big piles of files, and I would diligently work through that as best as I could. And when I was there, I remember that there was a woman who lived there, or, excuse me, who worked there, and her name was Judy. And I think at first I didn't even really know Judy's name. I wasn't entirely sure who she was. I knew she was a hard worker. I saw her every day. She would help us through the piles of files that we would work through, and she was always friendly. She was really quiet, and she would come in and smile at me, and I would try to diligently get through my files and talk to the judge in what I hoped was some sort of eloquent manner. And I saw her frequently, saw her every day, and I don't remember a lot about her other than she was very kind and she was very quiet. And I remember that she wore her hair in this blonde, cute little bun that she would pull back, and it was very distinctive, and I remember that about her every day. What I didn't know about Judy is that at the end of the day, when the rest of us would all go home to our families, Judy went home to what was her own personal hell. Judy was a repetitive victim of domestic violence at the hands of her husband for years and years and years. And what I didn't know is that Judy was isolated from absolutely everybody that loved her and that she loved. She was not allowed to talk to her family. She was not allowed to maintain relationships with her own children. What I didn't know is that Judy was not even allowed to drive herself to work, the very work that I would see her at every day. She was not allowed to drive herself there. He did that. She was not allowed to decide what she wore when she would go to work every day. He did those things. And she was not allowed to have friends because that was threatening to him, and he told her that she couldn't do those things, that she needed to be home, and he controlled where she went, how she went there, and everything that she did in her life. And he would engage in what was unspeakable violence against Judy. He would hold a gun to her head. He would strangle her till she couldn't breathe. And what I didn't know, even in my job as a Deputy District Attorney who prosecuted domestic violence cases, is that he was convicted of lots of crimes against Judy over the years, and that included things like assault and menacing and contempt because he would continue to contact her despite court orders telling him otherwise. And I didn't know any of these things until October 15th of 2017, when in the last act of control and of power over Judy, Judy's husband shot and killed her in their home here in Marion County. Judy is one of those individuals that you just read about, Mayor, in that proclamation. She lost her life in what was an ultimate act of control and of violence from the one person who was supposed to love her in her life. I didn't know any of those things about Judy until her file crossed my desk in the Marion County District Attorney's Office. I didn't know that that was the world that she lived in. I share this with you today because we all know a Judy. We all have a Judy in our life, and as much as we would like to not think about these unspeakable acts of domestic violence, they happen. They happen in our community. They happen every day. And in months like October, when we have an opportunity to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we have an obligation as a community to think about the Judys, the ones that we know, the ones that we might know, and the ones that we can help. And so I'm trying to make it my goal in October, and frankly, as part of my career, to remember the Judys and remember that we have an obligation to do our best to bring an end to that kind of violence, so that there is never that kind of October 15th of 2017 again. And I'm really lucky, as I said, to be able to share the stage here today with Susanna Escobedo, and I'm going to let her speak to you just a little bit about what we do in the Marion County District Attorney's Office to try to reach this goal of ending this type of intimate partner violence. I'm really proud of the work that she does and the work that we do, and after that, she'll be able to turn it over to Jane, and Jane can tell you all the other amazing things we do as a community.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us here, Mayor and councilors, for letting us come and speak on this public issue. So, as Paige said, I'm the Director of our Victims Assistance Division, and in the last couple of months, I've been working on doing some grants for our program to help fund more advocates to come and help us do, continue the work that we do. And so I've been able to see what wonderful things that we've done, been able to add in there, you know, all of the amazing work that we've done. And it really still surprises me, even though I've been doing this for almost 10 years with this program, all of the wonderful things that we are able to do with little resources. So we have advocates, a lot of volunteers, that help walk alongside victims of these type of crimes, and really any crime, when they, when they come and ask for help. Specifically with domestic violence victims, we see that they come in for help with protective orders, they come and ask for assistance in filling those out, and what we see in that is that they are just broken. And for many times, they are speaking about their abuse for the first time with somebody that they don't know, that they've never met before, and the courage that it takes to do that, to come and to seek that type of help, always amazes me. I don't know that I could do that. And so I'm proud that we are able to have advocates, trained advocates there to be able to help in that effort. We're also very lucky, as Paige said, to work so closely with our community partner. Not, not every county has, I'm sorry, not every community has that. Every county has that, that great relationship, but I'm glad that we do because we have a lot of victims in our community that need our help, and not one agency is able to provide everything that they need, and so we're able to partner in that sense. And particularly with protective orders, we do a lot of work together, and Jane can talk more about, about that as well. We also provide assistance at, to go to court with, with victims, and that's one of the, one of the most things that I'm proud of is when we are able to walk alongside victims in the court process and the systems that we, you know, when they come forward and report this horrible abuse, then we have this system that we have them go through, right, to hold offenders accountable. And it's a confusing, scary system for them to, to be involved in, and so they're confused, they're scared, right? And so we're able to help them along through those steps, and so that, that always amazes me, and it makes me very proud to be part of that. What I can tell you is that we have more and more victims coming forward and disclosing and reporting and seeking help, and that's great, and that's great for, for them, and that's great for their loved ones, but what we need to do is be ready to be able to offer the services that they're needing, the services that, that they need to have somebody to walk alongside, alongside them in the court system, but also for, you know, housing, transitional housing, moving expenses. So there's a lot of need that we see specifically for victims of domestic violence that we, as a community, can be helping with. What I, what I did also see a lot of and is, and we continue to see, is a need for culturally responsive services for all of the different cultures that we have and the different communities that we have in our county, so that when people are coming forward and are wanting services and resources, we're able to respond appropriately and have that feeling of inclusiveness so that they do feel like they can come forward and, and report and, and get the assistance that they need. So, but I'm really proud to work alongside Paige and Jane because I know that they are very devoted in their work as well, and so I'm really glad to be here so that we can speak on this and, and bring awareness to the community.
Well, we're very happy to have you here as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Clark. Members of the City Council. I'm Jane Downing with the Center for Hope and Safety. I didn't know I was infamous, but now I know. If the District Attorney says you're infamous, you are. So I'm just, I really appreciate the opportunity. I know that you, Mayor, and the City Council have been dedicated, and the community members in Kaiser dedicated to making sure that domestic violence doesn't happen in your community and every other community that you can. Congratulations on your award. That's showing that work that's being done all over the state of Oregon. And it, I'm proud that we are a part of a great coordinated community response of saying, "Let's do everything that we can." And at the Center for Hope and Safety, you all know, we have a 24-hour crisis line. We answer it in English and Spanish and 140 other languages. We have a safe shelter where people can go when they need to flee, and we're the only safe shelter in all of Marion County. We have advocates in the courtroom, and we, and we share those advocates together, which has been really nice. We have co-located advocates in the DHS offices. We are in the jail and the prisons here locally and at Coffee Creek, the women's prison. We provide walk-in services. Last year, over 10,000 people walked through our doors at our advocacy office. We have community programs we're out there doing, trying to make sure that folks understand about the issue and that they can come to us and get help and support. And I just, I want to say, on, on behalf of all of us that do this work, all the staff and all the volunteers of the agencies that are working on this, we couldn't do what we do without caring community members that help us, either by volunteering in one of our programs or giving to them. We have folks who bring us clothes, and some of you have done that, and we just so appreciate that. Whatever individuals can do, it, I want you to know, it does make a difference. I, I love that the District Attorney talks about, you know, individuals and brings that forward. Judy is everywhere, unfortunately. When you look at the CDC numbers, at 1 in 3, women have been impacted by domestic violence, sexual assault, or stalking in their lifetime. And so when you look at the numbers in Kaiser, we know we're not reaching everyone that we need to. So thank you for the opportunity to come and talk about this, highlight it. Thank you for giving us the time to be able to do that. We really appreciate it, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Your work is overwhelming. Your work is very difficult. You are saving lives and building lives every day. I admire all of you for the work that you do. And when we toured the Center for Hope and Safety, one of the questions I asked was, "How do you and the volunteers and staff there do self-care so you can do this work?" And I was deeply impressed that you could have, do such a good job of self-care that the volunteers can be there year after year after year and continue to serve. That's huge. Not every organization has that dialed in, and I find that incredible that you have been able to do that, to allow that consistency. So if people want to donate support, get involved with the Center for Hope and Safety, what's your website?
It's www.hopen safety.org. Very simple.
And when does Hope Plaza start construction?
So we are, our plan is to begin in spring of 2021 and be open in 2022. So that, fingers crossed, everything, we raise the funds that we need to do, we will have, and for folks who don't know what Hope Plaza is, we will have housing for survivors in the old Greyhound, where the old Greyhound bus terminal was right next to our advocacy office. So, yeah, it's going to be really exciting to have some housing to be able to provide in the downtown core.
Absolutely. Well, let me bring you this proclamation so that you can display it proudly, but most importantly, we are very proud to have people like you and your staffs and volunteers and a community like this that says, "We are going to be as supportive and as knowledgeable and as helpful as we possibly can be to make a difference for each person." Thank you. So much. Aren't they awesome? So is Jenny or Janey Garbata here tonight? Yeah, we tried several times to connect. Okay. So she is the Associate Public Relations Officer for the Greater Salem Filipino-American Association. It's my pleasure to issue a proclamation at her request to honor the Filipino-Americans in our community. Whereas October 2019 is the 432nd anniversary of the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence on the shores of the west coast of the continental United States, and whereas the citizens of Oregon should be informed of the positive impact Filipino-Americans have had on our communities. And whereas in Oregon, thousands of Filipino-Americans have made contributions to the fields of teaching, business, government service, agriculture, ministry, medicine, and other sciences, humanities, and the United States Armed Forces. And whereas it is imperative for Filipino-American youth to have positive role models and instill in them the importance of education, complemented with the richness of their ethnicity and the values of their legacy. And whereas efforts must continue to promote the study of Filipino-American history and culture because the role of the Filipino-Americans and those of other peoples have been overlooked in the writing, teaching, and learning of United States history. And whereas this anniversary is a significant time to study the advancement of Filipino-Americans, a time of celebration, remembrance, reflection, and motivation, and a relevant time for all of our citizens to learn and appreciate more about Filipino-Americans and their historic contributions to our nation and to Oregon. Now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, together with the Kaiser City Council, assembled in regular session, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Filipino-American History Month, and witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kaiser, Oregon, to be affixed to this document the 7th day of October 2019. So we will get this to that organization, but more importantly, there are opportunities to enjoy and to learn about the Filipino-Americans in our community as part of the rich heritage that we share. So we will make that presentation at the next opportunity. Next up, we have a presentation of the City of Kaiser, the OSHA Sharp Certification. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this is a big one for us. I'm going to not steal Michelle's thunder and allow her to do the staff reporting here because she did the majority of the work, and her crew just really did a spectacular job. Michelle, if you would, explain this to the council.
I'll try to explain this to the council. City of Kaiser contacted OSHA in August of 2017, and we requested to be considered for certification as a SHARP employer. And for OSHA, that is the Safety and Health Achievement Recognition Program. It means that OSHA publicly acknowledges a model safety and health program exists here and that safety is an organizational value. SHARP certification requires a comprehensive safety and health workplace assessment process, a lot of involvement from our employees, corrections of any hazards, and improvements in our safety and health management systems, and a DART rate, which is basically the time that employees are way or restricted from being able to do their work that's below the national average. This is a five-year program. It's got an annual recertification process to verify that we're continuing to meet all the requirements. meet all the requirements. And the benefit is our employees are able to return to their families, safe and healthy, at the end of every workday, which is always our ongoing goal. It's also provides for increased production due to fewer injuries and illnesses, reduced workers' compensation, and other claims and costs. And it's something else we can highlight when we're recruiting for new employees, that this is a high value for us, and that's not something every organization can provide. And last but not least, there's an exemption from OSHA inspections after the first year in the program, which is pretty cool. So as a result of these activities, I'm, I'm sorry, the first visit where OSHA came to see if we were ready to take on this task was September 2017. There was a second visit in April. Between then and following that time, a lot of city staff were involved in addressing a handful of issues and developing new processes and protocols. The Safety Committee, our union stewards, our Water Division Manager, and our Executive Risk Management Team all played a role in keeping this on course. As a result of these activities, the supportive consultation and recommendation of the OSHA consultants, which you will meet tonight, we've received confirmation that the City of Kaiser has been approved for the first year Sharp certification. And as such, we're the first and only municipality in the state of Oregon to receive the certification.
Wow.
By that, I mean, not that other cities aren't involved in the Sharp program because individual departments and sections are, but we are the first city to have the entire city be certified. I'd like to mention specific recognition for our Safety Committee, some key additional staff, and the Executive Risk Management Team. I'm going to list all their names just so it's in the record, and then I'll ask our consultants to come up.
You might also point out that some of them are here tonight.
And, and some of them are here tonight, and I'm actually going to ask them to come up for a quick photo. So.
Yes.
Surprise.
So the, the names of the folks primarily involved are Greg Barber, Brad Beverly, Dan Collingham, Sarah Eisenhut, Tammy Harms, Jeff Hyen, Kristen Myers, Trevor Winning, Brandon Buchheit, Kevin DiMarco, Darcy Olafson, Pat Taylor, Nate Brown, Tracy Davis, Chris Epley, Shannon Johnson, Bill Lawyer, John Teague, and Tim Wood. So not a small group of people. And many of our employees also were involved because as we did walkthroughs throughout the city, everybody had an opportunity to be asked questions or to be called in for quick conversations. At this time, I'd like to welcome our OSHA Senior Occupational Safety Consultant, Brian Anis, the Senior Health Consultant, Jennifer Ectel, and the Consultation Manager, Trina Vanderhay, who are here to give a short presentation to the city.
Welcome.
Mayor, Council. My name's Brian Anis.
Can you hear?
Got it. Name's Brian Anis. I am a Safety Consultant for Oregon OSHA. I have been with OSHA for 27 years. Am I talking too low?
Is it going now? Can't hear him?
Can you hear me?
No, unfortunately, we lost the sound.
Wait.
Are we good?
Madam Mayor, City Council, speakers, we have lost the sound within here, but the sound is still being recorded and projected at home. So there's, there appears to be some kind of a-
Just talk loudly.
Some kind of a gremlin inside the building here. So I apologize for that.
Sorry to the people who hear at home.
But don't hurt yourself. Very good. Anyway, I've been with Oregon OSHA for 27 years, and Jennifer has been in safety, or rather, health, and been a consultant for 29 years. Trina has been a manager, and of course, is the current manager for the consulting program, and has been with OSHA for 19 years. Jennifer and I were assigned the Sharp review for the City of Kaiser. And I still remember sitting down at Michelle's desk, and she asked me, well, how long will it take? You know, how, how long of a process? And I remember saying something like, well, you know, within a few months, within six months. Well, you know, it, it takes diligence and work to get through all the programs, to identify all the safety and health hazards that you come up with during a walkthrough, during program evaluation. It ends up being as long as it takes. So there's the answer there, Michelle. You know, the, the primary, the primary beneficiaries of the Sharp program are your employees. At the end of the workday, as she mentioned, they go home safe and healthful, and hopefully have, have no issues. The other thing is it adds to the city's financial efficiency by reducing injuries, by reducing the cost of workers' comp insurance, big-time cost savings from Sharp companies that we see that are certified. And again, the City of Kaiser is the only city in the state of Oregon to qualify citywide. Portland had to break up their water districts, and they've got some graduated water districts that they got through. Medford has one of their city segments that is in its second year. But, you know, I have to say, I am really delighted to be a part of this, and to see your successes. That is fantastic. We, as the consultants, are simply, and managers, are simply the coaches. Sorry about that, boss. We're, we're the coaches, the mentors, and the information sources. But, you know, as I have explained, safety and health and, and that management, we've always said, hey, I'll get out there and we'll, we'll introduce you to what the safety and health horse looks like standing out there in the field. In fact, okay, we'll help you get a rope on them, and we'll get them over to the side of the fence. We'll get a blanket. We'll help you saddle them up. But you have to ride that horse, so to speak. So again, it's been great to watch the changes, the successes, and the way Kaiser handled the challenges. Anything to add, Chief?
Again, my name's Trina Vanderhay, the Consultation Manager, Supervisor for the Salem, Bend, and Pendleton area offices. And it is my pleasure as the manager representative here tonight to actually present to you the plaque. And one of the things that we really drive home, it's signed by our administrator, Michael Wood, and he does personally sign all of them. And Oregon OSHA is one of the states that takes pride in grading quite hard. We are a hard grader, or auditor, if you will, of making sure that folks are held accountable in the, in the program. And so Sharp, Safety and Health Achievement Recognition Program, is looked on as a stepping stone to our VPP, which is a nationally recognized federal OSHA standard for voluntary protection program. So again, it's just one of those things where it's nationally recognized as well. So again, thank you from the state of Oregon for all your hard work, and, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we get folks up for a picture?
Yeah, definitely want to do a picture. And I want to congratulate all of our city staff for being so invested in making sure that you're creating a safe workplace that allows people to do their best, and as you said, go home at the end of the day safely. And I want to thank the leadership that made this possible because we want, like our community, every person is valuable, important part of the team. Well done, and congratulations. We will now pause for photos. Come on. Yeah, everybody. Come on, you guys. Get up there. Get a great picture.
Still working on it. Okay, Shannon, enter your tiptoes. All right, ready? Here we go. Ready, set, act like you like each other.
All right. Nate, don't wander off. Yeah, line them up. You're, you're good at this.
If you really want me to, I will.
I know you want. You make them all go, kind of stand there and post it.
All right.
All right. Have we got pictures? All right, there they are. Nice dog. Martha. Michelle.
Yeah, let's go around this way.
I'll give one more thing. Every year at the League of Oregon Cities, one of us gets to go to this wonderful reception put on by City-City Insurance. And this year, Councilor Kohler did that. And we get to accept an award that we didn't earn. The city employees did. So if you want to tell them what this is and make the presentation to Michelle.
Thank you. So the League of Oregon, on behalf of the League of Oregon Cities, the City of Kaiser, which has 110 full-time employees, received an award for having zero reported injuries for the year. Right, all 110. So that was great for me because I got to go eat the hortobores and get the award.
We got to do something about that. Can I get a picture with you? Thank you.
We're thinning it out.
That's one of the cool things about Kaiser is we have so much to celebrate every day. We just got a triple here. All right. I don't have anybody signed up for committee reports. Anybody from our city committees? Did I miss anybody on that? Okay, then we will go on to public testimony. This time is provided for the citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have one, two public hearings scheduled tonight. One for EuroStop liquor license, change of ownership, and one is a resolution authorization for supplemental budget water facility fund. Before I go into the blue sheets, I would like to acknowledge we have some scouts with us here tonight. From what troop number? 67, some troop number 67. So welcome. We're glad to have you here tonight. And if you have any questions, and would like to visit with any of us, we are always welcome to do so, and we appreciate the scouts making it a point to bring the members here to learn about local government, because this is what, where we get the stuff done. Kind of like the scouts. You get stuff done. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Under public testimony, I have Pastor Dominguez. Please come on down. Oh, Andrew.
Good evening. Buenas tardes. My name is Pastor Jose Dominguez. I am here with the members of Latino Action Committee. And as some of you might know, we're made up of local community leaders, Latino community leaders. And we, the members of that team, Aurora Cedillo, Irma Dash, Arturo, and Olga Gloria, and City Councilman Roland Herrera, make up part of that team. And most of us, like to tell you a little bit about us, we are former farm workers. We, we grew up attending schools in Oregon. We, we care about our community, and we want to make a difference in our, in our community. And so today, we're not here to ask for anything. Today, we're here to give something. And so one of the ways that we've been able to be involved in our community is just simply helping Latino students, encouraging them to go on to college, to go on to technical schools, but also to remember the spirit of volunteerism here in Kaiser. We not only want them to get educated, but we want them to come back and be a part of the community that they, that they grew up. So every year in our banquet, we award 20 scholarships to McNary Latino students, and we encourage them. And we believe that is an investment in our, in our community. And so we just want to say today that we have received great support from the school district, from our folks in the community. And, you know, we, we try to be very economical in our banquet, and so the less we spend on our event, the more scholarships we can award. And so today, we just wanted to show our gratitude. Wanted to show our gratitude to our city, to our mayor, to you, the City Council of our, of our great city of Kaiser, for your tremendous support for our event. Not only do you help us with a nice facility, but you also attend. And that, that means so, so much to the, to the parents, to the young people, and of course, to us as well. So today, we want to present our mayor, Mayor Clark, and our city council. We want to present you with a, with a plaque. Would you like to read that?
So it's presented by the City of Kaiser, and it has a mayor and city council in appreciation for your continued support for the McNary Latino Scholarship Event. Promoting, celebrating, and embracing Latino students' success, a sincere gracias to all of you from the Latino Action Committee. Thank you.
If our mayor could, could come?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your help.
Thank you, Pastor.
Does this mic work? And, and on behalf of LAC, I want to add something to this. There's a reason why Kathy won this statewide award, and one of the reasons is all the help and support we get in our work as LAC with our, our local committee. I, our council has been tremendous in the work that we do. They show up. And like I say, you can pretend to care, but you can't pretend to show up. And they've showed up at every one of our events, and this means a lot to our students. They, we've actually, I've been in contact with a couple of them that have come back, and they're anxious to help students that are still McNary and struggling and still trying to get through, not always struggling, but getting through the system. The reason we emphasize that we are all former students is because we've all experienced, I know myself, my high school counselor did not encourage me to go to school, or did not encourage me. It took my father and my family to do that. And sometimes they need a little push. And that's where we come in with our students. We had some great students that have achieved, and we had some that, we help them across the, what they say, the, the bridge of doubt. And they're not sure, and they need a little extra push. So that's where we come in, and we feel like we've served them well in the last two years. We want to continue to do that. And thanks to our council and our city for assisting us in this very project of ours. Thank you.
I also want to acknowledge that Councilor Parsons is one of the mentors.
Yes. Yes.
And one of her students received a scholarship this year, and I know that all of us on the city council have been very supportive of students, been mentoring, supporting, and finding ways to get involved. This is a team effort because we are that village that's raising our children to do great things. So, thank you for your work, and we will continue to support all of our students toward their dreams. Anyone else have a comment, question? All right. Do we have a date for-- oh, Councilor Reed, also one of our august teachers from McNary High School.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say that I see this from the other end, from the beneficiaries, and these kids, they're hard workers, they just don't always know how to work efficiently. And so, having mentors like the Latino Action Committee members and Councilor Parsons and so many of us in the city, it means the world to these kids to be able to have somebody to look to, to be able to focus their efforts in a way that's going to help them be successful. So, I know that it is greatly appreciated, and, you know, it's a hard world out there in high school, and it helps to be able to find some purpose in it and to be able to navigate the waters in an efficient way.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, and thank you for this acknowledgement and our encouragement. We will put it in the display case so we can encourage others to get involved. Thank you. I have two people who are signed up for a public testimony, and you could either speak now, and then when we get to your agenda item, then we will deliberate then, or you can speak right before we deliberate on that agenda item. It is your choice depending on how long you want to hang out with us. So, that would be Mr. Greg Olson talking about the social gaming, which is later on the agenda under 8B, and then Marley Kenny for the community band. Do you want to come on down? Okay. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me. Hi, everyone. Thanks for letting me be here. My name is Marley Koenig, and my husband, Mike Koenig, is the director of the Kaiser Community Band. They meet-- he intended to be here tonight, but he became ill this afternoon and drafted me for the job. I'm not in the band, so I hope I have enough information. I am the secretary treasurer, though. They provide-- the band rehearses, it's about forty, forty-five members. They rehearse Wednesday nights at McNary and provide free concerts for the community during the year. Usually a Veterans Day concert, sometimes a Christmas concert, because they also play for the Kaiser Tree Lighting Event, too. And then a spring concert at McNary. In the past, they've performed here at City Hall, and the fee has been the performance fee or the-- The wait-- the request is to waive the fee for using the performance area for the concert for Veterans Day on November 6th on a Wednesday. They perform on a Wednesday because they're used to rehearsing on a Wednesday, and so their schedules are already set for that. It's a free concert. We performed last year and I think the year before, and had pretty good attendance at the concert, which was nice, with a lot of community members. They'll be performing patriotic marches and various music that represents various patriotic issues. They have one performance which performs the theme song for each of the military, Army, Navy, et cetera, et cetera. And they have the people who have served in that area stand during that theme song, and so, that's kind of always the favorite for the crowd. So, anyway, that's all. We're here just to request a fee waiver, that's all.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any questions? Will be-- Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add, I've been to these concerts, and they are, in addition to having wonderful music, they're often very educational. And we learn a lot about not only the composers, but the music and where it came from, and it's fascinating, so--
We do have a fellow who plays the timpani--
Yes.
--who does like to have interesting things to say about each piece before it's performed.
So, it is educational as well as musical.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We'll get to that under-- The under-- I think it was administrative action 8A. All right. And Mr. Olson, did you want to speak now or later? Come on down. Thank you for joining us, and this is on item 8B for the social gaming. Thank you for joining us.
All right, Mayor Clark, council members, thanks for giving me the opportunity to present the chance to change the social gaming ordinances. Tough act to follow, I have no awards for anybody, but we'll try and get through it. I presented a large amount of information to Mr. Johnson, and instead of inundating you with what I feel are facts and common sense, I just wanted to say that it's an opportunity for Kaiser to join the ranks of Multnomah County and Eugene and Bend and many, many other communities around that offer poker. That's really what it's about, is being able to open up a poker room in Kaiser. A lot of people from here, a lot of my friends, we all have to travel either to Eugene or Portland, and I've been in business for 35 years. My family has owned and operated the Elmers on Market Street. We built the one in Woodburn back in '01. It's hit mainstream. It's on every TV channel now, you can't go anywhere. Part of the information I presented was just from last year's World Series events, just to show how many different events, how many different people, the amount of interest in poker nowadays is mainstream. And I wanted to hopefully see if we couldn't come to an agreement on how to approach that. And if you have any questions for me, then I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions? All right, and we will take up the matter later in the agenda. I don't have anybody else signed up for public testimony. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council at this time before we go into our public hearings? All right, then we will go to our first public hearing. And open the public hearing for the Eurostop Liquor License Change of Ownership. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On September 3rd, 2019, the city received an application for a change of ownership for the liquor license at Eurostop located at 3860 River Road North Suite 101 in Kaiser. The application is for a limited on-premises license. As required by Kaiser ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled, notice was published, and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the establishment. Kaiser Police Department reports a clear background check on the applicant and has no reasons to recommend denial of the application. In addition, Kaiser Community Development Department finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned and had no additional comment. It is recommended the public hearing be opened to allow testimony from the applicants or other interested individuals, and upon completion, the hearing be closed. As further recommended, the council recommend approval of the application for Eurostop under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and your recommendation will then be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? All right. I don't have anybody signed up to testify this evening. Is the owner here? No. So, is there anybody who would like to speak to this issue? All right, then I will close the public hearing. Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for Eurostop under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and further this recommendation to the OLCC, which is the Oregon Liquor Control Commission, for final approval.
Second.
It's been moved on seconded that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for Eurostop under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and forward this recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. That takes us to item 7B, which is Resolution Authorization for Supplemental Budget Water Facility Fund. Open public hearing. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, city council, I guess I owe you an apology. This is actually a correction from our budget committee to the adopted budget. We had actually discussed making an adjustment at the time, and it didn't get captured in the final adopted budget. So, this is, being on the side of being conservative and full public disclosure, we're doing a public hearing. This is to transfer appropriations that we had in fiscal year 1819 for a project that we didn't complete by the end of the year into fiscal year 1920. So, this is just a transfer of appropriations that has no fiscal impact on our ending fund balance for 1920. This is just to get the appropriations into the correct year. So, with that, if you have any questions?
All right, thank you. Are there any questions on the staff report? All right, I don't have anybody signed up to testify. Is there anybody who would like to speak to this issue? All right. Close the public hearing. Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 Authorization for Supplemental Budget Water Facility Fund.
Second.
It's been moved on seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 Authorization for Supplemental Budget Water Facility Fund. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Okay, that concludes our public hearings for this evening, and that will take us now to item 8A on administrative action, which is the waiver of the community center fee Kaiser Community Band. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as you heard earlier, our Kaiser Community Band would like to have a concert here and are requesting a waiver of fees. The city council has waived fees in the past for this group, and they are looking for Wednesday, November 6th, 2019, for a Salute to Veterans and America Concert. Concert will be free to the public. Iris Room B will accommodate the concert. The rental rates for the community center, Iris Room B, are listed below, and those include the 25% discount for Kaiser citizens or Kaiser-based 501(c) organizations, and the community band qualifies for that discount. So, you can see the various costs associated with it. The options for the council are, one, to grant the request for a complete rental fee waiver, which includes the room rental, security claim deposit, and cost for event staff; two, deny the request; three, waive the security and cleaning deposit but charge the room rental fee of $150; or four, waive the security cleaning deposit and the room rental fee but charge $80 for the cost of event staff. The city council does not have the ability to waive the requirement for a certificate of general liability insurance. Staff recommends city council discuss the request, consider the options presented, and then direct staff accordingly. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? Okay. Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council--
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Kohler, I did not see you. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question. Do they have a date scheduled also in December now for their holiday band concert? Thank you. My thought was if they are going to have a holiday band concert, let's waive the fee for that one, too.
Efficiency. Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay, Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt option one, which is to grant the request for a complete rental waiver, which is the room rental, security slash cleaning deposit, and cost for event staff for the November 6th Kaiser Community Band Concert.
I'll second that.
It's been moved on seconded that the Kaiser City Council grant option number one for the complete rental fee waiver. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Put it on your calendars, folks. Okay, that takes us to item 8B, Social Gaming Ordinance. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. As Mr. Olson mentioned, the issue tonight is social gaming. Gambling, the state calls it gaming, and I was looking over my staff report before the meeting and realized I didn't really give you the state background on it. Gambling, or as the state calls it, gaming, you start with the premise that it's all illegal, except for the state, first because they like the monopoly on it, or the Indian casinos. Then there's little carve-outs from that, and one of those little carve-outs is social gaming. But social gaming is only allowed if the local jurisdiction, the county or the city, has an ordinance that allows it. In 2004, the Elks and the Lyons approached the city because they'd been having games that they didn't know were illegal, and said, "Will you pass a limited social gaming ordinance?" And the state statute allows the city to set whatever rules they like. If they don't have any ordinance, it's all illegal, or you can have it set restrictive or not restrictive. The council at that time chose to have it fairly restrictive, and you can see in the staff report and at the very end of the packet after Mr. Olson's materials, the actual ordinance, and it's limited to the private homes or primary facilities of charitable, fraternal, and religious organizations. So, can't have it in a restaurant or a store or any other place. And over the years, we've gotten a lot of requests to revisit that, and sometimes it's come before the council, sometimes it hasn't even reached the council, and each time the council has decided to limit it to the current circumstances with the religious, fraternal, or charitable organizations. So, it hasn't come before the council for a while, but it comes up every few years, sort of like basketball hoops, so. Sorry, I couldn't resist. So, that's before you tonight. I'm not going to go through the entire staff report that laid out kind of the dates, et cetera, but it's for your consideration. If the council's interested in looking at it further, I would suggest that we probably would look at some general questions of where that would go. I did not spend any time on various options of that because I wanted to weigh the council's interest first, but you can certainly direct me as you see fit, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions on the staff report or other materials that were included in the packet? So, I had-- Go ahead, Council President Freeman. Do you have a question?
Yeah, so, Shannon, what-- Is this regulated by anyone? I mean--
The state? Well, if it falls in the category that's allowed under the city's social gaming ordinance, I'm not sure that the state investigates or not. I mean, they do have a gaming division, this Oregon State Police, that's all they do, is those officers, troopers investigate gaming violations. I don't know how thin they're spread or whether there be, you know, regular oversight. I'm not aware of, I don't know whether there's any specific regulations with regard to registry or licensing with the state at all. All I know is it's basically is a carve-out. If you apply, if the city that you want to work in allows it, then it's not considered illegal.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I had one question also. At the end of your staff report, it talks about, even if we change our ordinance, it's possible that the type of operation proposed may still be unlawful under state statute, but if it's done in other cities, what's the difference?
So, thanks for the opportunity to clarify that, and I didn't mean anything about Mr. Olson's suggested operation because I don't know what he has in mind. Several years ago, we were approached, and without going into a lot of detail, the type of game or poker they were suggesting had indirectly a house, what's called a house take, and that's just not allowed under state law. So, in that particular circumstance, I was able to tell the people that even if the council wanted to, they could not legalize the type of operation that you have or wanted to have. And so, that's all that reference means. Even under state law, social gaming can't have a house take, so you can't make any money, there can't be a dealer that makes money off the game.
So, the dealer then would be an employee, so they're not making a percentage?
Typically, typically, there is no-- All the players in the game may pay a fee to be a member of the club, and the club has its income on that fee only. So, the actual money at risk in the game can't be shared with a house, so to speak. So, you'd have a regular game of poker where the deal, the hand is sent around-- So you'd have a regular game of poker where the deal, the hand is sent around, but everybody has the same odds. So you don't have a game that has house odds to it, if you will. So blackjack is a typical house odds kind of game. I'm not sure how that plays under social gaming, because my understanding is you couldn't have house odds, but I'm not sure about that, those details.
Council Parsons?
You kind of answered my question a little bit, but I'm curious, does the city Salem have this ordinance? Because I know they have, like, all this...
Yeah. Salem, Mr. Olson's indicating, no, I don't believe they have card rooms, you know, I don't think they allow... I think Portland does, Eugene, Multnomah County.
So they can be a member of the club, right, and that fee would be that, but the house take it, so I guess I'm just curious as to how they would...
Yeah, and I'm not certain about that either.
Mr. Olson, do you want to go ahead and answer that question for us? Thank you.
The way the clubs make money is from the door fee. It's a one-day membership, in essence, to get in, and then the house makes no... It's called a rake, and that's when you take money off the table every hand that's played. And there's no rake in the clubs in Portland, Eugene, Bend, anywhere in Oregon. It's a rake-free environment, and the only money the house makes is the door fee from the people coming in.
Okay. Council Ferrera?
Real quick, do some language and material about age limit, and in this case, you're not around, I mean, it's a thing, but alcohol, you have to be 18 or something around.
What I put in the thing is, there are some places who they sell alcohol. A lot of the Portland clubs, they have a restaurant, alcohol, the whole deal in, and then so then no minors can go in. Like, they just opened a club down in Corvallis, which is college town, and they have the people that can come in from 18 to 21 because they don't sell alcohol. And that's where that language went in. Part of my initial packet was to say, there is an opportunity to configure this any way you want. Eugene doesn't do the same thing Portland does, not the same as Bend. Everybody tweaks it a little bit, and that gives you guys the flexibility to say, you know, we don't want it around alcohol, so no alcohol, and then, because up in Portland, you could put it in any bar, they can... And there are, there are bars up in Portland who have one table, and then there are clubs that have 16, 20 tables, and they just charge the door fee. And some of the... One club up on Barber Boulevard, they have a full bar, and they make money off of food and alcohol on top of the door fee. They don't make any money off of the actual poker game, but it provides an environment for people to play poker. And for example, two weeks ago in Bend, they held a tournament, and they guaranteed a $25,000 prize pool. 95 people showed up, and the prize pool went to $47,500. And that's just one night in Bend. There's a lot of interest in it. There's a lot of people who play. There's... I have to travel to either Eugene or Portland to play right now, and a large number of my group, otherwise, we have to do a home game. And what I was presenting to Mr. Johnson was that it is flexible in any number of ways to just, to have the opportunity to play. The 21 games, if you're playing blackjack, that is the house banking that game. In poker, Texas Hold'em, the house doesn't bank anything. It's all money amongst the players that stays amongst the players. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, I think that answers your question.
Yeah, but it doesn't seem to apply here in terms of alcohol, not yet, huh?
I'm sorry?
You're not around alcohol in our, anything in Kaiser here.
No, that's what I presented. I said, I would, I believe enough in it that it doesn't have to be. You know, you were talking about control and oversight, and who watches it and who manages it. You know, if it's in every bar, if it has the opportunity to be in every bar, that's not important to me. I've had bars, I had restaurants, I... The game of poker itself is so mainstream and so popular now that it supports it just with the door fee. There's that many people who play. I can go play on a Friday night up in, up off of 122nd and Gresham, and there'll be 120 people who go in on a Friday night just for a game. So my suggestion was, if you're worried about oversight, if you're worried about people getting drunk, if you're worried about that kind of environment, I'm happy to do it without any alcohol. I don't need the alcohol. I don't need the food, you know? The community has enough alcohol and food if that's what people want to do. Poker players really go play poker. I've been in the lottery business for 30, 20 years, and lottery players aren't necessarily big drinkers. They drink coffee, and that is, it's not about alcohol.
Okay. Oh, Council Parsons?
Yeah, okay. Is there a limit at the table, or can people just lay down as much as they want? I think that's my issue I'm having trouble with right now.
You... The short answer to that is, generally speaking, games, if you're talking about a tournament, tournaments can go anywhere from, you know, $20 buy-in to $500 buy-ins. I haven't seen a tournament in the Portland clubs bigger than 500. The Pac West is held once a year at the casino over at the beach, and they run $1,000, $1,500 buy-ins, which may sound like a lot of money, but in the poker community, it's not necessarily a lot of money. And in cash games, people have regulated that to, you know, like we, in our home game, most people in our home game buy in for $300 for a cash game, which is different than a tournament. And so it's not... I don't know if that answers your question or not.
No, it doesn't.
Okay. But limit, but limiting, you know, Oregon Lottery doesn't limit how much money you can put into the machines. And I have personally witnessed people sit down and put thousands of dollars into a lottery machine. Do I agree with it? No. But in poker, you have a lot more control over your money. You don't have to just push a button and watch it disappear.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah.
Council Coler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, thank you for putting all the information together to Mr... Who'd you submit it to? Okay, to Mr. Johnson. Thank you for putting it all together, because there's a lot of information in there. Couple of questions that I have. Isn't, is there a game currently being held at the Elks Lodge or the Lions Club?
I don't know about the Lions. The... I do know that the Elks was running a game, but, and this is not necessarily... The reason that I believe, I never played in it, that I understand the game fell apart at the Elks, was not the Elks establishment itself, but the people running the game, they were doing some stuff that poker players don't necessarily like to see, where they say, "Well, I'm running the game, so I get to play in this one for free." And that's not fair, and that's not equitable. And there was enough poker players who called the guy out on it that they decided, you know, "We're not going to play in this game because you're not participating with the same amount of risk as we are." I haven't seen or heard of any games going on at the Elks for probably about a year. I did have one of the guys, through a friend, try to get into my home game, but I haven't seen him, so...
And what is a typical fee for joining a game?
The door fee?
Yes.
Portland clubs, every Portland club runs $15 for a door fee. The new club that opened up in Corvallis runs $10 for their door fee, but they're smaller, getting started. I would assume they will go to 15 shortly. That's the going rate, is $15. As a casino will rake $3 to $5 out of every hand, and that's how the casinos make money.
Council President Dove.
I would just like to follow up on the Kaiser Elks Lodge. I would like to hear from a representative if they have a game at the lodge. Full disclosure, my husband happens to be the chairman of the board at the Kaiser Elks Lodge. We've been a member for 11 years. I've never seen a poker game there. I've never heard of a poker game, but I'm not, you know, I would think we would want a representative from the Kaiser Elks Lodge to actually...
I could get Virgil Lee here. Do you know Virgil?
Uh, I think most people know Virgil.
Yeah. Virgil plays in our home game.
But I would like an officer of the Kaiser Elks Lodge to actually go on record to see, to say if there's any type of gaming or poker that's happening at the lodge. I think in fairness to Council Coler's question, I just think that we need a representative from the Kaiser Elks Lodge to answer your question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks.
So, Council President Freeman, did you want to put a motion on the table?
I do not.
Ferrera, do you want to put a motion on the table? Or is anybody interested in putting a motion on the table to proceed?
I was her. I'm with you.
Okay. So I don't see anybody who would like to put a motion on the table to make a change in our gaming ordinances at this time. So we will take this information. We appreciate the time you put into it, and I think we'll be leaving this as it is at this time. Thank you very much. Item 8C, Kaiser Revitalization Plan. I don't think we'll be here till 11:30 this time. Hmm. No, I'm knocking on wood. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and we don't like to make predictions about things like that because it jinxes it.
Yes, it does.
So we're going to go to Mr. Brown.
At your last meeting at September 16th, you held a public hearing in order to consider the changes for establishing the River Cherry Overlay District in the Kaiser Development Code and in the Comprehensive Plan, and to adopt the plan, as in the Kaiser Revitalization You closed the public hearing and left the record open until September 30th so that additional testimony could be submitted. There was no additional testimony submitted. And so you directed staff and the consultants to implement some changes into the plan. And I've identified those in the bullet points that are in the staff report for you. I just wanted to review those so that you know exactly what changes were made. And we, the plan that is in the packet identifies those changes with red line text that shows up. So the appendices have been clarified, the relationship of the appendices to the plan have been clarified, that the appendices are explanatory, they provide background, but they are not binding. They are not, they have no regulatory role, and they are simply a record of the discussion and the development of where that project went, and provide the background for that. The issue of the safe pedestrian crossings have been added in several spots so that the city, it makes it very clear that the intent of the plan is to identify appropriate safe pedestrian crossings, and that has also been inserted. The matter of the cross-section of River Road is clarified as a recommendation, which is dependent upon other processes, such as a transportation system plan update or a TSP amendment. It's also been clarified that construction of improvements on the existing right-of-way width would be considered as an interim measure until future time when additional right-of-way is actually acquired, where some of those additional improvements could be constructed. And there are suggested cross-sections in the plan, which shows how that might be, but they are, again, as simply guiding illustrations of what was studied and what the committee recommended to council. The threshold of when the plan takes effect for construction of buildings and reconstruction of buildings was clarified to indicate that 25% of the total valuation, instead of 25% of just the building, was then changed because of your direction, which excludes interior remodels, maintenance and equipment, and maintenance of parking lots. Now, that's important, as we have received a question, and we are going to ask council's clarification on your policy direction regarding access control and when that takes effect. And I'll have Shane explain the details of that question. There was concern about the actual reference to the chariots bus schedule that was in the plan. That has basically been updated to show what the current schedule is, but indicate that's just the current schedule, and we have no control over when that schedule may change. The phrase "window coverage" has been changed to "minimum window area" to try and emphasize the distinction between windows, the types of construction, and the signs that may, that council may or may not allow in the windows. Claggett Creek improvements are referenced in the Public Investment Section, and new language, which referenced the accommodation of the future Claggett Creek Trail project, has been added. The allowance for reduced parking is unchanged, however, the language has been modified to indicate the maximum allowed is not reduced. Accessory dwelling units in the RCOD are allowed, two per residence, one attached and one detached. Parking is required only for the second ADU, which is a question as to the new statute. So the new statute basically says you cannot require a parking stall for an ADU. In this case, we are allowing actually two ADUs, and so there's a question of exactly what the statute is going to extend. In the plan, we're recommending that we, if you were to establish one ADU, no additional parking would be required, but if you are establishing two, then one additional stall would be required. And that's an important consideration for the council. Now, we did have the question of somebody that wants to reconstruct a parking lot, and the threshold that is actually identified in the plan for access control is actually a little bit different. And with that, I'll ask Shane to explain the subtle distinction.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you. So in the RCOD Zone, the section 2.130, which is that whole document that was all read, basically, all the new zone code, so in, there was a lot of discussion. We pulled the minutes, we kind of looked at, actually, looked at the tape to remember exactly what was said on the 16th, and there was a lot of testimony that received, a lot of discussion about the appropriate threshold for when the elements of the overlay district would kick in. Now, when we talked about that, specifically, things were being discussed, and I believe one of the things that was stated under testimony, not 100% on the verbatim, but something to the effect of, "So are you telling me that if I'm going to repave my parking lot, I would have to move my building or rebuild my building?" And clearly, we all were like, "No, that's not what the intent was." But in section 2.130.07, which are the access standards, it'll be on page 115 of your packets, in section B, there's an applicability section, and it's different than the applicability section for the entire section of the code, and this kind of drills it down even further, and it's specifically for those access management and control standards that were discussed. The consultant spent some time talking about the importance of if and when things redevelop, if there's a different street section, a big element of safety is going to be consolidating driveways, taking traffic off of side streets whenever possible, addressing the spacing issues. I think Mr. Lawyer said, "Yeah, there's a lot of driveways that don't meet that standard." And so the consultant, they took the testimony... And so the consultant, they took the testimony, they took their notes, they modified the development code, we further tweaked it to make sure everything was truthed out and met. This piece, however, kind of slipped right through the cracks on us, and we did not feel comfortable nor sure as to what council's direction was for the implementation measure for just specifically those access management and control standards. Um, we do believe that the language as proposed before you, we are not comfortable with that language, we would want to see it changed at a minimum to, instead of saying being repaved or resurfaced parking lots, we would much rather say that, say something to the effect of reconstruction. Um, that would be more in line with what we do with erosion control measures essentially. Um, there's, I, I'm not a construction guy, but when we get into excavation and getting down to dirt disturbance, that can trigger water quality and things that I don't exactly know what they mean, but Mr. Lawyer does. Um, and, and then obviously, another option would be simply to strike the applicability section that's in the access control and go with the applicability section for the whole chapter, which would then trigger back to just the 25%. And so if somebody was going to redo their parking lot, I guess it would depend on how big the parking lot and how expensive the project was. It is, yeah, so that's basically, as we see it, a couple, couple options are there on the table that would make sense. Um, but I, the call that we received kind of indicated, "Well, it's in the minutes, and that's not what the direction was." And I said, "Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think we really talked that specifically about it," um, because we were more focused on some other elements of that applicability section. So, that's kind of what, what we wanted to make sure we got direction before you get too far into deliberation and making motions, and if that happens, this would be something we'd want to see changed one way or the other to clarify.
So as we, as we replayed all of that tape and, and went back into the notes and looked at all those issues that we were dealing with at the hearing, we wanted, our intent was that when we talked about making sure that we exempted maintenance of parking lots, that it was things like restriping or sealing or, you know, regular maintenance of a parking lot. The question that we have is, at some point, to make the changes along River Road, somebody is going to have to be affected. And at, what is the threshold and what is the policy direction of council as to where that threshold should be? Currently, it's at 20% of the parking lot, and what we, as Shane explained very well, what we are thinking of is that's reconstruction of a parking lot. So if you've got to take off the asphalt and reconstruct your parking lot, the threshold is at 20%. Is that, is that the policy direction that the council is comfortable with is really our question to you. In any case, we would, we would request that you actually change the word to reconstruction instead of paving or repaving. Just to make it clear, some people may consider the sealant that you put on a, you know, an existing parking lot as repaving. We just wanted to make a little bit more clarification. So, what, um, any questions on that question? Do you understand the question and, and, um, the concern?
Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I, I just had a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, I, I just wanted to make sure that change of use in your world was not ambiguous. We talked about that a little bit last time and how that can mean a lot of different things to a lot of people, but in your world, is that efficiently clear?
Yeah, so in the, in the first section of the code, earlier in the chapter, the very beginning of the chapter, uh, the consultant actually modified that language to just completely exempt the change of use. So there was, and I know, I was sitting here and I, I had some confusion as to what our consultant said and what they intended that meant, because I was like, "Man, I, I process changes of uses all the time. It might be one office to another, or it might be an office to a restaurant, and we have some exemptions for things in there." Um, so right now, the, the code that's before you basically says that with a change of occupancy, as long as the building itself is not physically being altered, it's going to be exempt from having to be upgraded.
And there's no additional parking that's required. So, we do have some, uh, thresholds that are built into that, but the reality is we don't have necessarily, if they're doing no structural permits, there is no change of use permit per se. It comes with building code requirements that are triggered through a building permit process. Um, and so as we evaluated all of that, we basically suggest that the change of use simply be exempt, that the other thresholds of expanding the structure, expanding the parking need, um, those would be the kinds of things that would trigger our look at when the RCOD would apply.
So, the change of use verbiage still needs to be there in, in that particular section, or are, are you suggesting we strike that part out of, uh, the applicability section?
Yeah, um... So, yeah, this language gives me some pause too, because it, it says the change of use when the parking is increased. We have an exemption for parking to be not increased with changes of uses in the zone. So, it's, it's kind of unnecessary language, frankly. Um, so it's not saying it triggers it just with the change of use, it's saying that if they were having to build new parking, then it would be, it would be the reconstruction of the parking. So-
We'd reword that.
Yeah, I, I think that we would probab-, I don't know that we'd strike it completely, but it would be a reworded sentence that I would probably ask my city attorney to weigh in on, to make sure we were ironclad. Um, and I'm sorry about that, uh, as Nate and I discussed that actually this afternoon, I said, "Yeah, that now conflicts with the other language that we just had the consultant change after the last meeting, so we do need to make that match." Clarify that.
Counselor, uh, Kohler?
No.
Oh. Oh, Shannon, okay.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on Nate to make sure you folks understand and make sure I understand too. This applicability standard that Shane's pointing to here just has to do with the access points. So, for example, if somebody came in, was going to do a remodel, but it was under that other applicability, the valuation one, that dollar amount, they wouldn't have to do the facade improvements or any of those other improvements. But if they changed the parking, and let's just say by 20%, if that's what you choose to leave it at, uh, they increased the parking by 20% over the existing parking area, and I noticed that says "area" not number of spaces in that one, there's three different categories.
Yeah.
Then, then they don't have to meet the facade requirements, but they would have to meet these access standards, which, which the goal is really a laudable goal, we've been trying to do it for years, and it's, it's a tough battle, and that is to try to close as many driveways on the River Road as we can and have accesses more combined. It's a safety issue, it's a convenience and efficiency issue. Of course, if you're a business person, you know, "I want my driveway right where I want my driveway." And, and so you can see those drawings in the next three pages, which I found were really helpful, uh, and that's what we're talking about here. Am I have this right, guys?
Yes.
Okay, so, the, the issues are extremely narrow one, and I just want to make sure you folks understood what that issue was. It's just having to do just when, when do these access requirements, or in other words, basically closing of driveways or moving driveways, when do they kick in? Uh, if they don't kick in by the valuation one. And, and what it's saying here is just like Shane pointed out, that subsection B is the way it lays out, and we're just trying to confirm that's the way you want it. Um, so, just more explanation than you probably wanted.
Uh, probably, probably the more explanation, the better. Uh, Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown, one of the things you said triggered a question for me, sorry. Again, if we have a building like used to be, the connects building was then was the Lamont Valley Appliance, and somebody says, "Well, I'm, I'm going to change the use, and when I change that use, I'm going to go in and I'm going to put little offices in there." You're saying as long as they don't change the valuation more than a certain percentage, then they don't have to change the facade? What, I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
Okay, so, so the facade, any interior change of use that is just within the walls of the building is, um, is exempt. So, the provisions, um, shall apply as follows, they apply to all new construction or major renovation, where major renovation is defined as construction valued at 25% more of the assessed value of the existing structure and parcel of land on which it is located that was added, uh, unless otherwise specified by provisions in this section. Then the following provisions say, "Interior remodels, which do not change the exterior of the building or increase its floor area or building footprint, are exempt." Um, replacement of equipment that is needed, such as, um, kitchen equipment or HVAC equipment, all of those things are exempt.
That's the way I understood that, but then when, when you said that a minute ago, it's like, "Wait, I thought we exempted that."
We have, and, but that is, that is what applies to the building construction. Now you flip over, I've got two open sections here on either hand, when you flip over to access control, when we want to see a change in the number of driveways, we can never take away the access of a building or a lot. But many lots have multiple driveways that we are trying to control for safety and for making a better pedestrian experience along River Road. And so that's why there's a different threshold in the, in the, uh, applicability standard of access control. And that's, and that's the big question that you have before you, I think that we didn't really fully discuss at our, at the end of the public hearing. So, that is your policy choice in question.
Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Enlighten me on some of this, because I, I might have overlooked it on the driveway thing, I want to back up a little bit. Have you, do you have an inventory of how many businesses are, are impacted right now? Because I get the safety thing, and I think I'm 100% behind that. 20%, I don't know enough to, if that's a good number or not, I wish I did.
We, we have a reliable, um, estimate from our public works director, and that's a lot.
Yeah, I, I knew, I knew it was a lot, but I, I was wondering if they had a number.
Fair.
And there's, there's a time, I mean, it's not, it's going to be gradual for folks.
Actually, it's, it's completely driven by the individual property owner, and nothing that we, so it would be triggered by them choosing to redevelop their property.
Okay, gotcha.
So, at the time, and, and it is, it is difficult, because we have seen businesses over the years, change of occupancy is really common. We have things go from an office to a church to a restaurant to an office, and every time they have to do that, there's a different occupancy load in the building code, they get a building permit. So, those kind of things not captured at all, but in this specific section for the access management and control standards, as we said, we need to align the language now, because it did change, and that, thank you Laura for catching that. But, uh, the, the reality is, is that, um, the reality is that when someone comes in and they have to fix a parking lot, oftentimes they are excavating out and rebuilding it. So the threshold that's written in there is that they're reconstructing at least 20% of their individual parking lot, so it would be an area calculation. I just want to make sure that, because it, it had basically three standards, it said if you're increasing parking by 10%, you're doing this by 15%. Those, those two things will have to go away, but we would want to focus in on knowing what that proper threshold was for the reconstruction element. Um, because right now the way it's written, it said repaving, which that was, that's a, that was not the intent, so.
We want them repaved.
Yeah.
Thank you, Shane.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam.
Counselor Reed?
Yeah, just kind of a follow-up question to that, so that 20% is enough to not disincentivize people from maintaining their parking areas?
Well, the, yeah, that's a tough question, because everybody obviously has the bottom line they have to look at. And so any threshold is going to disincentivize people doing that. But, I, again, we are not intending to prohibit resealing of a parking lot. I think major portions of Kaiser Station were just resealed. That is not what we're talking about capturing or restriping it. Um, there are other things that kick in for ADA, striping, and some of those kinds of things when you restart, stripe, but that's not what our intent is here. Our intent is, when you're maintaining an existing parking lot, it's, it's not covered. When you actually have to reconstruct that parking lot, that's when we're saying, "We believe there should be a threshold."
Yeah, I think the one thing, and we discussed this a little bit, and the one, one of the, one of the elements there is, if somebody's going to rebuild an entire parking lot, they're going to outlay some pretty significant cash. And if you're investing that much, obviously, into your property, that's one of the pieces that we feel that we need some policy direction from you all, is at, at what level is it appropriate that we say, "If, if we're investing this kind of money back into the community, back into your property, then where do we bring that up to this new expectation if a brand-new business was coming into the same location?" So I think that's the, it's a tough balance, but, I mean, the reality is they maybe have to rebuild a driveway, remove a driveway drop, pour some new sidewalk that's at grade and some curb, right, they'd have to change that bill. So, I mean, there, there would be some expense in the public right-of-way to, to physically close a driveway, or possibly open a different driveway off a side street if they had that access. But other than that, if they're already spending the money for the parking lot, it might not be a huge impact to them.
Well, the standards for ADA and other, um, things are going to kick in anyway at that point, so, uh, plus, when you're looking at that kind of reconfiguration, you're going to make it more welcoming for people and cars to pull in and pull out because it's safer. Um, we've got somewhere, we've got three driveways with two, what I call spite fences, separating them for no good reason other than that, "This is my property, you can't drive on it." That doesn't make it really safer maneuvering in and out in a motor vehicle. So when you, um, I love the project, and I know this took years off your life, Mr. Brown, the Copeland property, um, where you have the martial arts and the dental building, consolidating to that one driveway made that so much safer going in and out for all of the, all the patrons of the businesses there. So I think that's an example of what this can look like when the property owners and the city work together on making that change. It actually improved the accessibility for people driving as well as the safety of people walking. But for me, it was the safety for driving, being able to pull out, make that left turn without having somebody in, you know, 10 feet away trying to do the same maneuver from the same parking lot. So I think that, if, just to give people an example of a project we've already done, um, that did consolidate and it reduced risk for the people driving. So, um-
So-
What we will then talk about during our deliberation process will be the language change to, this will be one of the list.
So-
Yeah, we will, so when we put, put the, um, the plan on the table to debate, this will be one that we then, uh, we can then amend, uh, decide how we want to amend it. I'm not sure we, I don't want to get into deliberation outside of the, that step, if that makes sense.
So, the actions that we are, um, that you will be taking is to adopt the Kaiser Revitalization Plan as part of the Comprehensive Plan, which includes removal of the existing McNary Activity Center Plan references in the Comp Plan. The Comprehensive map changes, the commercial to mixed use, sorry, the com-, the Comprehensive Plan map changes, sorry. The zoning map changes, which is commercial to mixed use, and again, it's only those commercial properties. We are not, um, recommending or putting forward to you changing of any RS zone or the other zones besides those commercial zones. And the Kaiser Development Code amendments, which create the RCOD Zone along with the supporting amendments to align the proposed changes. Now, I do have to apologize, and I tried and I tried to get it straight, but the, the nature of the track changes made some duplications in some of the tables, and, and there were some that were a little confusing, I apologize for that, I really tried hard to get it straight, and I just couldn't do it. So, um, our, the staff's recommendation is to the council to consider the proposed adoption of the Kaiser Revitalization Plan, Comprehensive Plan and the map changes, zoning map changes, and the Kaiser Development Code amendments, to deliberate and direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings to adopt the proposed revisions. Table 3 of the plan lays out the potential funding matrix naming, namely, urban renewal, local business improvement districts- namely, urban renewal, local business improvement districts, parking management fund, planning for acquisitions, grants and staff support as sources of funding. Beginning, the review of these actions is anticipated in the Plan but does not obligate the council to any particular action. Staff also then recommends the following motion. I move to direct the staff to begin the process to evaluate how to establish funding or the public investments called for in the Plan outlined in Table 3. Table 3 is the funding table. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
So just to be clear, what we're going to do is we'll do the first set first. We'll take that one second as separate motions and deliberations so we don't confuse the two. Questions on the staff report? Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are just a couple of questions that I had that I wasn't able to ask you today. One is on page 2, it says pedestrian, to create additional pedestrian walkways. I thought we were going to research to see if we needed additional pedestrian walkways rather than create. And then about, on page 113 talks about landscaping and the three-foot landscape requirement at minimum. But then I thought we had zero setbacks and I, so if you have a zero setback, how does that affect the landscaping?
Well, let's take them, we're flipping pages here. So let's start with page, back on page 2, you said?
Page 2, the executive summary?
The executive summary.
So it's under Transportation is the second to last bullet that you inserted.
So as part of the Transportation Facility Plan, that is, that was the recommendation, the language that you suggested at the meeting. And again, that's-
My understanding was we suggested that we look at it and not to create it.
Okay. In the later action table, the proposed actions, it talks about doing a traffic safety assessment and to do an assessment of where appropriate pedestrian facilities may be located. So it's all subject upon evaluation and study. I think the overall goal is to create additional. The entire plan has a goal to create additional pedestrian amenities, both on the sides and crossing. So we didn't think that that was necessarily a conflict of, I remember the conversation that you're referencing. But all of that has to be studied through engineering analysis and it has to be warranted and it has to be studied and inserted as part of the transportation system plan process. So I was okay with leaving it, but certainly if you want to recraft that, that's up to you.
Excuse me, I was just surprised to see it there when it says create because I thought we were going to study it.
Again, we've, so the opening sentence is a variety of transportation facility improvements are included in the Plan to support mixed-use multimodal development of the Plan. And the key recommendations include creating additional pedestrian crossing. But again, that's yeah, so.
I've been thinking if there's another word that to suggest during deliberation to swap out and we can have that, we can debate that as one of the potential amendments. What was the other one that you wanted to look at?
So the zero setbacks. The following planning standards shall apply to all required, sorry, exceptions. These standards do not apply to properties with front yard setbacks that are less than 10 feet. That is on page 114 in 2.13006 landscaping standards under B landscaping standards and G is the very last one. So if you have less than 10 feet, then you're exempt from those landscape standards. Does that answer your question?
I just look at B landscape standards on 113. All front yards and all side yards budding shall be landscaped according to the following standards. All street-facing façades shall have a landscaping along their foundation. Landscape areas shall be at least three feet wide.
Except unless they're exempt.
So G in that same section has an exception for that. And I think the reason, I think the reason the consultant wrote it that way was that not all buildings are going to have that zero-foot setback always. So it's essentially if they're up on the street and there's also that talk in the centers about the pedestrian plazas. So if they're having a hard space with seat walls or planters or something that's an alternative, more of that urban design, then it wouldn't have a landscaped area because it would be more hardscaped. But if they're providing a landscaped area, that's where they want it to be, the three-foot minimum. Because if it was like a foot minimum, it would be kind of worthless.
Was there another one? Okay.
Any other questions? Clarify anything. All right then, let's go ahead and put a motion on the table so we can start down the list of potential amendments. Counsel President Freeman?
Okay, so if I am following all this, I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the actions to adopt the Kaiser Revitalization Plan as part of the Comprehensive Plan, which includes removal of existing McNary Activity Center Plan references in the Comprehensive Plan. Comprehensive Map Changes, Commercial to Mixed Use. Zoning Map Changes, Commercial to Mixed Use. Kaiser Development Code Amendments. Creation of the RCOD Zone along with supporting amendments to align proposed changes. Oh, sorry. And direct staff to prepare an ordinance with the findings to adopt the proposed revisions.
Okay, I won't ask you to repeat it, second?
No, but I get to. All right, it has been moved and seconded to the Kaiser City Council. Do the following actions, adopt the Kaiser Revitalization Plan as part of the Comprehensive Plan, putting removal of the existing McNary Activity Center Plan references in the Comprehensive Plan. Comprehensive Map Changes, Commercial to Mixed Use. Zoning Map Changes, Commercial to Mixed Use. Kaiser Development Code Amendments. Creation of the RCOD River Cherry Overlay Zone, District Zone. District? No. River Cherry Overlay District. Oh, I got it right. Zone along with supporting amendments to align proposed changes and direct staff to prepare an ordinance with the findings to adopt those proposed revisions. All right, let's tackle that first one, which was the amendment to 2.130.07B, which was the one we were just talking about with the paving parking lot. There it is. Okay, so I would propose a friendly amendment to I made a note and then I changed it. Change the word from repave resurface to reconstructed. So more than 20% of the site's existing parking area will be reconstructed. So I'm proposing as a friendly amendment. Does the mover accept that? Second?
Second, second agrees.
Okay, so it will be amended?
Is that correct, Nate?
Is that the way you needed it?
On that one, there was also the 10% to 15%.
Well, that's the first one though. Okay, we got that one. Are we good with that one?
That one's good?
Are we good?
Yeah, that one's good.
All right. Hey, I'm going to take these, you know, one little bite at a time.
That one was easy.
Okay, so that's the first amendment. Okay, the second one was on the change of use where the site's required off-street parking area will increase by more than 10%. What was that, what does that change? I didn't write that down. Yeah, we're locked in now. I'm okay with this. What was?
So this goes to the conflict of when we rewrote the change of use language with the thresholds that it would be captured. So we are suggesting that you can go ahead and strike that altogether.
Would you strike the entire B that I just amended?
Say.
Which part?
That involve a change of use where sites required off-street parking will increase by more than 10% of the existing area.
That one? That phrase?
Yeah, so, and again, I apologize. This one kind of slipped through cracks. I had a sticky note on it a couple of weeks ago, but so in the parking section earlier in the chapter where we regulate how many parking spaces for each commercial use, there's a specific exemption that says changes of use from one use to another of an allowed use in the zone is not subject to additional parking requirements. And so it's intended to be more flexible for business owners. We have several existing complexes where they were built to a certain standard. And then I've actually turned away some building permits over the years because a restaurant requires more spaces than say that office did when it was originally built. And then they can't change the use. So and we are reducing our parking standards as well, but we still have an exemption in there that says, hey, if something was built at this level and you're going to do a change of use and it's going to increase parking requirements? Well, it's not going to increase parking requirements. So the issue I have with this language is that it conflicts. It will never come into play. Like there will never be an increased need of parking with a change of use because it's specifically exempt from increased parking. So my recommendation to streamline it would have it to read something along the lines that you'd have the first sentence, then the comma, the provisions of this section shall apply to development that, you know, basically where more than 20% of the site's existing parking areas will be reconstructed and eliminate those other two sections. Well, yeah, because they're both or change of use.
Right, but if somebody comes in and just increases the number of spaces.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, I mean, again, that's the policy direction from them to say that. The change of use element should just go away.
So the question is though, do you still want that second one left of 15% of the existing number increasing? Even if they didn't increase it by 20%?
Right, I mean, that would represent additional new parking lot being built.
So we'll reword this and come back. But I mean, right now, I need to double-check with staff. But I would think you delete that one phrase and then just say development and you insert the word win and skip down to the number of parking spaces will increase by more than 15% of the existing number of parking spaces or more than 20% of a site's existing parking area will be reconstructed. And when we come back next time, we can decide whether or not you need both of those because those are different, right? I mean, you could have a situation where it's one but not the other.
So we want to press pause and get some recommendations that we can discuss next time?
Yeah, we'll come back with a final ordinance, but I'll point that out in the staff report, so.
Dogging your ear in now, so I'll remember to go back to it.
Except if we could get a sense of the council's direction, what we're trying to figure out is where do you think is appropriate to set the thermostat? As to the amount of change that you want to see happening on River Road? And how many times you want to make sure that these access standards are complied with? Basically, the consultant was recommending that there and he, they testified that this is not an onerous level to expect a change to occur on your major arterial. And so remember, the only difference and the only pause that in my mind is we switch from area to number of parking spaces. Number of parking spaces basically also includes an access to those parking spaces and those kinds of things. So, but not always. Sometimes reconfigurations happen where there's more efficient layouts and parking and those kinds of things. So we were okay with the development of this standard to try and indicate that if you're expanding your parking, you don't even have a change of use, but you're expanding your parking space lot, then you should pay attention to the access standards that the city has adopted. Or if you're reconstructing for whatever reason, maybe you've, you know, maybe the parking lot was substandard to begin with and you actually have to reconstruct more than 20% of your parking stall, then we're saying, yeah, well, look at your access as well. So that's what we're really trying to get to, what your comfort level is for setting that thermostat to be agents of change.
Well, for me, it's a safety issue. If you are redoing your parking lot, you know, property owner, we want to work with you on a design that's going to make it safer for your customers to come in and out. We can help you with the site plan for where those parking spaces can be. I'm thinking of a couple of properties that are very inefficiently designed right now. If they had the opportunity to work with a planner on, they could maximize the better use of the space and increase the safety for people going in and out. I say that's a win-win. It's a win for, you know, people traveling, it's a win for the customer. So I'm very comfortable with having, you know, let's get this done, folks. Go ahead, when you're in the process of making that change, let's help you make that change so it's one and done rather than have to come back later and/or it still isn't working very well with your neighboring properties. I think it's an opportunity, that's how I see it for a property owner. So I'm okay with these thresholds. Does anybody want to see other ones considered?
It is 15% of the existing number of parking spaces or 20% of a site's existing parking area.
What do we have?
Oh, well.
With new development, we have access control standards adopted in our Street Standards of the Development Code, but it's pretty limited. It would be to brand-new commercial development and/or subdivision plating or land divisions. So we do have some access control standards in our code right now. But otherwise, no, this is a more robust access control program for sure.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that come back with the recommendation, use these levels and then if people have additional thoughts, we will debate it in the final decision. Okay. Other changes, proposed amendments? Anybody else? Counselor Kohler?
Just on that one word, instead of create to put, create sidewalks and pedestrian things rather than research that or to examine maybe the use of that.
If you use the word consider, it would be consistent with the other references in the Plan. So that would be fine if, I mean, I don't see that creating any kind of, oh, what are we going to do now? That's fine.
So your friendly amendment is to change the word create to consider? Mover? Hold on a second. Well, it was his friendly amendment. Sorry, Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just feel like create is a little bit better of an action item. You know, I feel like we want as much of this to be actionable as possible. And I feel like it's couched in language at the beginning of, you know, based on studies and so forth. I think we want to have a direction that will actually be put into practice based on the research and consideration that we do. So again, I like create just because it's more actionable.
I think that's well considered, that's something that I think will really take up in the Transportation System Plan because we're going to have to apply for, get that into the Plan to apply for any grants. Each one's about a quarter million to do. So I think we'll probably see that pop up in detail in the Transportation System Plan if I'm guessing correctly and I'm getting a head nod from Mr. Brown. Okay. But your point is well taken. There was, I have to remember not to lean back because I just told all of you all that. There is, all right, I have to remember not to lean back because I just told all of you all that. I've got a couple I would like to propose. There it is, at the bottom of the same page, public investment, where it's talking about the key investment, the key public investments include, and I would like to propose a friendly amendment to say "may include", because right now it sounds like we're obligated to pursue these specifically, and I feel that's limiting. So, what I'm proposing is the key public investment initiatives may include. Are you okay with that?
I am.
What page is that in?
So, I'm same page, page two at the bottom. Go back to the beginning, executive summary.
So, you're just changing wording?
I'm adding the word "may" rather than specific to include. I'd like to be allowable, but I don't want to be limited to. Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure that when we change things in the executive summary, the corresponding things that we are summarizing also get changed.
All right. Thank you. I've got another one unless anybody else wants to jump in. I know, big surprise, right? And this is something that, I know this was talked about a great deal in the process because it's a great example of a gathering space, and that's the Wallery Christmas Tree Plaza. This language sounds like create accessible public plaza to include upgrades to Wallery Christmas Tree Plaza. You know, that may include, as we develop this, if that is the logical place for a plaza, we will do it. If it is not the logical place, I don't want to be stuck saying, well, we got to do it. You know, right now, it's a lovely place for, you know, at least once a year. And if there's possibilities for doing something for an upgrade for that area region, great, wonderful, fantastic, but I think that we have, I feel more comfortable with "may". It's the next page, top of three.
Oh, top of three.
Executive summary.
So, the actual create an accessible public plaza, the Kaiser Revitalization Plan suggests that the city invest in two plazas during the next 10 to 20 years, so.
And I'm okay with, you know, the notion of creating gathering spaces for people to come and be, and we had that conversation last time. But when it says "to include," that sounds very directed, and we might find something that works better. So, I think it's a great example, but I would not want to be married to it. So, may I suggest a friendly amendment to change it to, which may include upgrades to Wallery Christmas Tree Plaza? Yes. Second, are you okay with that?
I'm okay. I'm good.
You're good?
You know, I still kind of confused, to be quite frankly with you on, and, you know, you guys know so much more than, you know, we're trying to figure this out here. What exactly, where do we go, I mean, what can we do right now to keep this thing going in terms of what do we have? I want to move the ball, sort of.
I appreciate the question, Councilor Herrera. We, and that's the whole point of the plan, is it lists, after a lot of study and a lot of evaluation, it lists some suggested improvements. It does not establish, for example, a funding source. It does not establish the urban renewal district. It just simply says, the city needs to be prepared to invest, to change the feel of our major arterials, that we need to be prepared and step up to the plate to actually invest in our community. And it gives these as a suggestions, and we actually had them put a design together so that you could see what that would translate into. The suggested design in the plan assumes that there is going to be redevelopment and that the property to the east of that plaza would be redeveloped into something more in line with what you're seeing exemplled here in the plan. And so, yes, it does get confusing, and it is hard to say, well, wait a minute, there's just a bunch of suggestions here. But it does create the structure of the code that all of this is going to be evaluated. As part of the background, it did a market analysis that said, under existing conditions, people aren't going to be able to demand higher rents in their property because the current level of improvement is pretty commensurate with the market as it exists today. What this plan suggests is that the city has an opportunity to invest more and to do more and to create more space for our citizens in this community through the implementation of some additional concepts. Creating two additional plazas, one of which they outlined. They gave another example of improvements that could happen up on Claggett Creek. Those kinds of things are examples of what we would hope to implement through this regulatory structure.
Oh, yeah. Are we good with the second?
All right. And to Nate's point, if it's in the plan, then we can go for funding. With our Transportation System Plan, when we have projects in the plan, we can then go for the grant funding. So, this is actually going to be an avenue for us to be able to apply for grants. With our parks, you know, our master plan, that having projects in the master plan makes us able to apply for grants. So, this is a funding mechanism in that. I do have one, two other changes I'd like to make. One is a rather simple one. It's on the landscape, it's packet page 114, it's page 11 of the code. And I'd like to add a reference to the street lists or the city lists. Where to put that? Yeah. Here it is. On 2.130.06, landscaping standards, under B1F, it says, "Plans approved by the zoning administrator or on city-approved list shall be used." Can we add that phrase, "or on city-approved list", to 2D as well? Right now, it just says, "Plans approved by the zoning administrator shall be used", and we do have like a street trees list, things that would be appropriate, so I'd like to add that phrase there. The mover says? Suction says? Okay. Thank you. I think we have a fabulous street tree thing. So, I've got one more. And this is a conversation I started late in the evening last time, and we had, we kind of did this on communications. This is on the Cherry Center. It's on packet page 105, code page two, and elsewhere. And it's defining the Cherry Center. I've got no problem with the descriptions of the Lockhaven Center and the Shamawa Center. The point I was trying to make, and I did not do well, was on Cherry Center, saying that the intersection of River Road and Cherry is intended to be the center of activity within the Cherry Center. Where that didn't strike me as, didn't strike me right, is that the other two describe places where we have activity now, where you have the center of people choosing to be there and do business now. And what I have observed is that that node in the Cherry Center is Orchid, between River and Cherry. That whole section there is very vibrant. There's developable land within that section right now, especially at the corner of Orchid and Cherry. That is ripe for opportunity, and it is already being very heavily used. The, you know, the Wallery Christmas Tree Plaza is a potential for development, but what I, in my day-to-day life, when I'm driving on River Road or going to do business, it's on Orchid, where I see that as being a real center for activity, where people are already choosing to go, where businesses are already choosing to do business, and there's opportunity for development and redevelopment for those properties. I would like to suggest that we ask the, that we make the change that the intended center of activity be Orchid Way. And those are my reasons why. Does that make sense, finally, Mr. Brown?
They don't have a big tree, do they?
They've got trees, little trees. But it's the, where people come to do business, they go to the restaurants, they go to the stores, they, there are social activities that happen in the parking lots, and more could happen there. So, that is why my suggestion is that we go with the reality of what's already happening in the Cherry District, just like we did with Shamawa and Lockhaven. It's a proposed friendly amendment, or I can make it a motion, and we can debate it. No, it's fine, I'm just sure I processed, but yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Did you have exact language for that phrase, or were you?
Yes.
I guess my main question was, were you referring specifically to River, I mean Cherry and Orchid, or more River Road, River Road Cherry Orchid? See what I'm getting at?
What he just said.
That's okay, that's, we'll word that accordingly, then.
Yeah, I mean, Orchid is a, you know, is a segment. Yeah, River, Orchid, Cherry. That, that is a very vibrant, successful, energized area that could really take it up to the next level. Some of the properties around there develop or redevelop. And it's very walkable from the community, from all those neighborhoods. Thank you. I will not keep debating something I just won. I will be quiet now. Any other changes, amendments to the motion?
Do you have to repeat it, let's see the whole thing?
No.
Tracy has it all correct. Good.
There's also on tape, so you can go back and listen to what we said, which is a very good thing. All right, anything else? Going once, going twice? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Thank you, everyone, this has been a huge lift. All right, anything else on this before we go to our next agenda item?
You have another motion?
Oh, we do have one more.
Yeah, we have table three.
Um, like I said, grants. All right, yes. I know. Council President Freeman?
So, this is the table three one, correct, Shannon?
Right, the quotes at the end there of the staff report. The motion, the suggested motion.
Right here. Oh, okay. I move the Kaiser City Council direct staff to begin the process to evaluate how to establish funding for the public investment called in the plan outlined in table three.
I would second that, young lady.
It has been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to begin the process to evaluate how to establish funding for the public investments called for in the plan outlined in table three. Discussion. Councilor Parsons?
So, my understanding is, staff wants our recommendation. I mean, you've put a table together here on different ways to pay for it. Is, in my understanding, is you would like us, our recommendation, then you can come back with a plan? No? Yes? I guess, Ms. Erle? Erle, it's late?
So, the plan identifies that whole list of potential funding sources.
Right.
A business improvement district. Well, that's not something that the city is going to establish. So, it lists how are we going to actually implement some of these things? And so, the motion basically anticipates that we would come back to council and say, you can do this, you can't do that, that's up to somebody else, you can do whatever.
Well, you know, again, this is going to be that opportunity to put together options on the table for us to consider, and also, different projects are going to have different funding streams. But this is something that when we had our fledgling Economic Development Commission, this kept coming back up. Where is the money going to come from with a plan? Then we can start looking at the appropriate streams to plug in because it's not going to be one size fits all, it's going to be one size fits one. Each project is going to have a unique funding strategy, and then we'll be able to pursue that and execute on each one. So, I don't look for this plan or this set of options to be something simple and just a one and done, or not even a two and done. But I think it's going to be more comprehensive and it's going to guide and guide us as we go through the funding of different projects. Is that, that's how I understand it.
What might be helpful is if the council actually let us know, it doesn't have to be part of the motion, but let us know how you would want that to come back to you. Do you want a report on a future council meeting? Do you want a work session? That's all, you know, it would be helpful for us to say how, because otherwise, as we have a lot that is going on, this is a very busy city, you are very busy people, and so, unless you set specific goals on how you want to implement.
But I think we have to get this right. So, I personally would like to have a different funding. Things that I think we need to work, if we're one and done, then obviously. So, that one just.
Councilor Reed?
So, my understanding, this is a long-term project with many different pieces, and what we have before us is a list of possibilities, and depending on what grants we have, what projects they are, they're all going to be different. Funding sources and establishing of, you know, ways to go after those funds. So, could we even have one work session about this? Or is it just as we get ready to do the projects, if we just talk about how we're going to fund them at that point?
Well, I think the discussion would be able to be had in that some of the grants, okay, you know, maybe the Gates Foundation maybe have a grant that we don't know about. But, and so, the discussion about grants are probably going to be limited to such things as what kind of stip money, what kind of federal money is available through the Metropolitan Planning Organization? Those will be limited to transportation. The ability of what is it going to take for an urban renewal? Those are quantifiable things that we can lay out for you. What does it take to establish a business improvement or a local improvement district? We can lay out those rules for you so that you know what you're going to be faced with, I suppose. Some of the specifics on the vague things like grants, we are not going to be able to. I mean, who knew there was a federal rail grant application available for us that we did not get, by the way? Really upset. Anyway, so, I think we can have the discussion, and I think you can have it sooner rather than later because some of these processes, like the urban renewal district, is going to be a process that you have to go through to get it established. The business improvement district, we could have the chamber participate in that discussion. And so, you could get a sense of what is the feasibility of that? And could we rely on that? Those kinds of things, I think we could prepare a discussion.
I think it also might feed into some of the discussions we have at our long-range planning when we're looking at our budget. I know that's more specific to our day-to-day operations, but when we're starting to look at longer-term investments, that might be something that we start folding into the long-range planning because that would make sense if we're talking about city investments to bring the, not just the council, but the Budget Committee up to speed on that because it does impact our financial position. And that might be a recurring thing on a regular basis. So, we can continue to keep that, pushing that envelope forward. So, just my thoughts. All right, any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Good work, everyone, appreciate it. Consent, no, we have D, I've got to turn the page. Item D is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a revocable license agreement with Michael G. Lupitz regarding Sunset Park. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. As you may remember, uh, Mr. Richardson, Ms. Deschawn, with property adjacent to Sunset Park, had requested some provision with regard to selling their property and access to their rear yard. Although, um, the council was not interested in just a blanket, uh, extension of the existing agreement, which allowed, um, traffic like, in essence, through the park, um, they directed that we may work with a buyer. Mr. Richardson, Mr. Ms. Deschawn found a buyer, Michael Lupitz, and I've been working with him, uh, based on some direction, um, that Chris and Bill got. And by the way, Chris and Bill did most of the work on this, uh, and were really creative in being able to put this together. I just kind of did the paperwork and talked to Mr. Lupitz. He was willing and understood that we'd have to have a revocable license, and so you see that agreement before you. We unfortunately do not yet have the exact legal description, so the resolution authorizes, uh, Chris to add that to the final version, but Mr. Lupitz has approved the form of the revocable licenses before you tonight for approval, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Counsel President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, authorizing the city manager to sign revocable lease agreement with Michael G. Lupitz regarding Sunset Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, authorizing the city manager to sign revocable license agreement with Michael G. Lupitz regarding Sunset Park. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Thank you for your good work on this. Consent calendar, Counsel President Freeman.
Uh, we have one item tonight on the consent calendar. Item nine A is approval of the September 16, 2019, city council regular session minutes.
Somebody need to pull that for discussion. Counselor Freeman, or Parsons does, so, um, let's go to Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Even though I was not here for this, that very long meeting, I did sit and watch it, um, on my iPad with my headsets, and I asked lots of questions to Mr. Nate Brown, so I will be voting on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel President Freeman.
Uh, I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the consent calendar, item nine A, the approval of the September 16, 2019, city council regular session minutes.
Second.
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Counsel liaison reports. Counselor Kohler, shall we start with you today? All right, dealer's choice.
Dealer's choice. Interesting. One of the big things that I pulled from the LOC that I was able to go to last week was that we need to find your passion, we need to set goals, have purpose, find happiness, and make your passion your life's work. And I think if, if we can do that in our lives, we're, we're going to be happy, and those around us will be happy. I had a question in some ways, do I need to go back about six months before, no? There was, there was a number of things that I wanted to talk about last council meeting, but it was kind of ran a little late, so I just wanted to just touch on a couple of those. And one of those is that, uh, there was a lot of work that was done on the traffic bike set, bike head committee meeting, and I appreciate the work that was done there. I think we've talked about all those things already, but, but it was, it was nice to do that. I was able to go to the Kaiser Fire Department Day of Remembrance, that's how far back this goes, and, uh, the ribbon cutting for the Simanca House. So those are, those were some amazing things, uh, that I was able to participate in, including the Government Affairs Committee and the Percy Event on September 18th. I didn't have any negligees to wear, and there's no pajamas, so I, I wore my regular things to help at that event, and that was fun. It was fun, and I think that there was a lot of, um, a lot of good things that were done there. I appreciate the efforts of, um, what's women's group that calls that?
No.
No, Kaiser Network of Women. Thank you. And, um, then, uh, some other things we'll just not worry too much about now, we'll kind of pass. The Stormwater Advisory Committee meeting, I was impressed to learn that there were twenty-four hundred, is that what it is? Twenty-four hundred, uh, sketch basins? And that they clean those twice a year? Once a year, but it was, that was impressive to learn and, and that they were on top of that. And, um, just a couple of things, we have a skate park that's outside, and I think it's pretty damn close to being completed, and I'm sure we're going to hear a lot more about that. One of my questions is, is, we have a requirement that everybody's supposed to wear a helmet when there's skate park, how in the world is that ever enforced?
When they hit their heads.
Not particularly well. From time to time, the police will go over there and remind them forcefully, sternly, that they're required to wear helmets, um, but honestly, it's something that we struggle with all the time.
When I was over there this afternoon, all the gating was up that says, no trespassing, and, but yet there was probably thirty-five kids out there using it this afternoon, and I didn't see one helmet in any of them.
I think they had an event.
They did.
I know.
I know.
I was going to touch on this a little bit later, but I might as well interject myself now. The skate park was scheduled to open tomorrow, but the users of said facility would, had such great excitement, they helped themselves beforehand, okay? And when I, when I say users, users of all ages, okay? I'm not talking, I'm not talking just kids, all right? We were going to open it tomorrow to let the last of the caulking that the contractor placed this morning cure. Phone call to the contractor after we knew, after staff had been there twice to tell people, get out, it's not open yet. Their excitement level was quite high, they kept climbing the fence, and so contractor said, oh, the caulking's fine, if you want to open it, open it. So I directed Robert, pull the gates back in the parking lot, let them have it. So the skate park is unofficially opened tonight, officially open tomorrow, and it is done, and it's very, very nice.
I just want to say I commend you for all the work and the contractors' work on that. I was over there several times, visiting with some of the workers and, and some of the people involved, and I was real impressed with what was going on, and I appreciate your work with them. And then, another question that I have is just on, on carpet, are we, when, when is carpet scheduled?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And yes, there's some meetings I get to go to this week, but that's okay, we'll talk about them another day. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will try and keep it short today. One of the more interesting things that I went to recently was the first responders' fundraiser, and this was a really interesting gathering, because it was, it was initiated by a very, um, community-minded company, the, um, Advantage Heating and Air Conditioning, and their customers who also wanted to do good in the community. They had this wonderful impulse and didn't really know what to do with it, and so our own Jeff Cowan helped them kind of be able to direct things, and so he was very, very involved in, in this event as well. So, um, just wanted to really commend all of, all of those people involved, both the company and the business, and our own, um, public service, um, representatives. Jeff Cowan was, again, a hu- a huge presence at that event, and then Lieutenant Chris Nelson and I were there representing the city, and it was just a really impressive, community sort of, um, involvement, and so I, I really appreciate that, and I, I hope we see more of that. And again, I, I appreciate Jeff Cowan and all his work with that, and, yeah, so that was a lot of fun. And we had our Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting this last, uh, this, that last week, and, uh, Counselor Kohler didn't mention, but we popped into the Public Works Fair just before this meeting, and lots of fun things were happening, the kids were having a great time, and lots of bling and, uh, merch, and all kinds of fun stuff, and, um, they were, one, one thing was like some kind of, uh, obstacle course, where they were throwing in circumstances that the, that the firefighters might encounter, I think, and having the kids kind of figure that out. So anyway, it was really interesting and fun, and again, uh, it's such a wonderful community event. Uh, I will be going to a social media roundtable next week on the seventeenth, and I, I feel like that's a really important, um, discussion, because social media is so much, such a huge part of our lives, and we don't always know how to use it responsibly, from the very youngest of us to sometimes the older's of us, and, um, so I look forward to hearing what we, what, uh, what that has to offer. And then, um, Roland, I'll let you do your, the Hall of Fame thing, so. So that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel President Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended, uh, last week, the Marion County Reentry Breakfast, which was here in our own facility, which, uh, was a lovely event and some amazing second chances, and there for a while was not a dry eye in the room, which I always, um, those ones are always hard, but it is, um, awesome to listen to, and the nice thing is, is all the money that was raised that morning actually will go to their fund to help, um, newly released people that have been incarcerated, mostly with getting, uh, their ID, so ID cards or birth certificates to get IDs, and really interesting, the breakout of, uh, what is needed. West Kaiser Neighborhood Meeting is this week, Thursday, the tenth, and Counselor Smith will be attending in my place. We have the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night. Wednesday, what did I say? Tomorrow, well, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, pick a day, Wednesday, thank you. I need one more day in between. And then, uh, also on the tenth, we have the Marion County Commissioner Breakfast. I know, Bill, I'm hoping you're going to talk about River Road and the cleanup of the cones and all that, and especially the intersection, I know, I'm sorry, the intersection of River Road and Shamawa on the west side at the light, you know, the, the base of the cones were like in the middle of the street. My husband picked them up and tried to get them out of the street the other morning when we were walking, but then I noticed the next morning, they're like back out in the street again, um, so I know you'll talk about that, and, um, we're patiently waiting for the big toy to reopen. I know it's going to be a little while, but my grandson's very impatient, just so you know, because he can't play at the park, but other than that, life is good. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I came back from my vacation to go to the Government Affairs with, uh, with the chamber, and our own Mr. Nate Brown went there and made a presentation on what we discussed tonight. I think he really, they really understood, especially when they talked about the sign and all that stuff, the window thing, but he clarified everything, and they were pretty happy with the way the plan was, so, and their businesses were, so that was good. I attended the Liberty House Luncheon, I think the next day. We had, uh, never a dry eye in that place either, and, and attended by over five or six hundred people, or, it was just amazing how many people were there, and our own Mayor Clark got to say a little thing too, so that was pretty cool. I went to Ben then for a couple of days, uh, to the LOC conference. I attended a couple of the breakout sessions. One was the 2020 Census, and I know you guys had, someone made a presentation here for your last meeting, but there's so much more information that we as a city need to know, that I've asked the mayor, and I know I'm going to hear it grown, for a work session on that particular subject, so stay tuned on that one. I know, see, I, I knew I was going to hear something, but it's okay, though. Uh, and then, and then, uh, then coming up, I have a chamber board meeting this Wednesday morning, and then the Government Affairs Meeting in a couple of weeks, and I will be attending, oh yeah, Roland's going to talk about that, so I'll attend whatever he's going to talk about. Thank you.
Well, with that then, Counselor Herrera, you're up.
I decided I'm not going to talk about it. Everything they said, I was there. I want to start off a little bit with the LOC, I think that was, um, they had a lot of good stuff. I really enjoyed, uh, meeting Maria Pope, right? Or, uh, the roundtable there, Kathy and I attended that. I think, Dan, you were there, weren't you, Dan?
Yeah.
You're not with us, you were a little further out, I remember that, so. Anyway, uh, the, the subjects they had there were pretty relevant, we're going to work on getting some more stuff in there, but I learned a lot about, about the, um, well, our board, our, our council, because there was a thing about traits about successful councils, and I was looking at the traits, and we pretty much do pretty good on all of them. I thought pretty proud of our, our council. And I also learned, followed up on some of the homeless class, the diversity thing that I'm trying to, and then I learned a little bit extra about SDCs. I always thought I knew a lot since I was around it for a while. Also, uh, was enlightened on some of the subjects on eminent domain, which I did not know, but very interesting. But as far as the LOC, that was pretty good, except, uh, the, the place I stayed in. Anyway, so I went to, October first, we had our second chance meeting, uh, the, the fundraiser, and I thought that was, uh, very nice, and Mayor did an excellent job with the introductions and everything, and, uh, boy, that was very emotional, listening to the, uh, the young lady's story, that was very good. Uh, Hall of Fame, should I talk about the Hall of Fame?
Yes, please.
Let's talk about the Hall of Fame.
I happen to be on the committee, and that's kind of why I push supporting the Mary. This year, we're admitting, uh, Tom Smythe, if you don't know him, he's a coach that was driving the bus for our both state championship teams, he was the head coach. Uh, Luke Atwood, uh, who we all know, was an outstanding athlete in our, in football, baseball, basketball, you name it. Nikki Hayhurst, who's with Allstate at pretty much everything, uh, went on to Utah State, I've known her since she was a little girl, and I've watched her succeed, and the 2001 football, um, championship team, which was, uh, known as the Giant Killers, and they were amazing. If you didn't experience that, I was lucky to be right there in the sidelines for every one of their games. The other thing I was going to bring up is I attended a very interesting and informative, uh, people's representative, which is put on by, uh, it's got a long title. Anyway, what we did was a mentor training for elected officials, and we're trying to, uh, mentor young Latinos that are interested in running for office and school boards and whatnot, to get involved in situations where, you know, positions of, of decision-making, where we seem to be a little excluded sometimes. That we're, that was really good. Dr. Jim Garcia from Chameca, Latin Latino Studies was amazing, and, and my cousin Linda Herrera, if you don't know her, uh, thirty years at Chameca, the diversity, uh, person over there, did an incredible presentation, uh, Eduardo Langulo, and also Dr. Anna Del Rocchio, did an incredible, uh, presentation on leadership and coaching skills, and, boy, I tell you, it was, I want to do a work session under on some of that stuff. But anyway, uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up real quick was I also, uh, getting ready for tomorrow's, uh, I'm not going to say the acronym, it's Mar- Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, which I've been appointed to the, I don't know how I got this, but I'm, I'm going to be in the executive committee, which is actually a pretty good deal, because you get to see what's happening at the top level in terms of the decision-makers, everything from, uh, reunification, uh, Assistant Paige was here, and she could probably articulate better. In fact, both of our, our folks that were here were very, they're part of the executive committee, and it's very interesting when you're at that level, listening to, um, the decision-makers and some of the things we're affected with, everything from, uh, you know, the, uh, what do you call it, capital punishment, that's been changed around with the legislature, I don't know if you know the complexity of that, but I won't get into it. Also, uh, I'm looking forward to our meeting tomorrow, because we will be touring again the, uh, the, over at the Sheriff's, uh, Facility Public Safety Building, and I'm no, I'm sure I'm leaving out a bunch of stuff, but overall, we've been, uh, very busy, and, uh, I also appreciate the, uh, the company of our team, uh, over in Ben, that was very good to all get together and, um, uh, network with other folks, because when I network with other cities, you always appreciate how good we have it here, when you hear stories of other cities and, and situations. You, uh, you are grateful that we live in a community that seems to do things pretty good, so that's pretty much all I'm going to say today. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Here's Counselor Wolfert.
I was originally going to say that I didn't have anything to report, but I just remembered a moment ago that, um, McCarry's ARF-RTC program is putting on multiple fundraisers right now, um, and obviously they do a lot of, like that, so, um, having the, uh, money provides them with flexibility for that. So if anyone's, um, I can get you that, sadly, I thought of it a moment ago, but,
So how's things going with the construction and everybody navigating?
Um, I'd say that it's, uh, everyone's adapting around it really well, it's not really too intrusive, but it seems to be going well. Obviously, they have a, a lot of work left to be done.
I saw a video that, um, it was a photo montage that, uh, school board, uh, I saw a video that, it was a photo montage that School Board member Danielle Bethel posted on Facebook, kind of taking through a lot of the areas of construction. Holy cow, there's a lot going on there. Well, glad everybody's figuring it out and being flexible. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add one more thing. Last Friday, on McNary's journey to become an AVID demonstration school, AVID being a program to help students navigate their way into college, we had over 50 visitors from across the state come visit McNary. And they were, the traffic was directed by our JRTC. They were entertained by our choirs and orchestra and band. They were fed lunch by our culinary department. And in addition, toured the school and visited all the classrooms. And again, just did McNary and Kaiser proud with that, so.
Excellent.
Really proud of them.
Wow. Okay, just a couple of things to add, because I think you guys have covered just about everything. On the 19th, I was able to be a speaker for Corporate Coffee, which is a local business group. They like to find out what's going on in Kaiser, because we're shaking and moving things here, how we're growing our economy and planning for the future. And this, this plan is definitely part of that. They're watching it closely for investment and opportunities as well. So the business community is paying attention to what we're doing here in a very positive way. The Council of Governments Board, the key things that we're working on are the stability of our small business administrative loan services. Current regulations make that problematic for councils of governments to do this work, and we're working with our congressional delegation on some solutions. We also want to update you on the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative, and that has now officially become the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. This is now the Development Council, moving toward the reestablishment of our continuum of care for Marion and Polk Counties, separate from what we are now in, which is the ROK, which is the Rural Organ Continuum of Care. And we are starting the process of the negotiations with the ROK on what that separation is going to look like, and then submit that to Housing and Urban Development in Washington DC as part of our application process. It is, we've gotten a tremendous amount of support from our, on the federal level, and great collaboration between the agencies and the government agencies within Marion and Polk Counties. They did elect me as chair with Salem City Councilor Chris Hoy as the vice chair of the Development Council. And we're developing the charter language for the new continuum of care. Eventually, that'll be coming to us to adopt on behalf of the City of Kaiser. So that is making tremendous progress. In addition, this month is when now our alliance, the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative, will begin the process of participating in Built 4.0 as part of the next cohort in this national program to help us with strategic planning for tackling the, what we need to do to come together and effectively serve the needs of the most, of the people in our community who need it the most. And we're trying to make a difference, but we want to do it in a meaningful way. And not just go, well, you know, maybe a Band-Aid here or a little bit there, but actually make a difference for more and more people long-term. So I'm excited to see that coming back. The Cog Annual Dinner, please put this on your calendar now for February 19th, 2020, is going to be here at the Civic Center, because as Sean O'Day said, I'm chair, so I get to pick the place, and it's going to be my, our place. So we'll be here again, and then I'll finally be able to pass the gavel to the vice chair, Jackie Frankie. And thank you to everybody, and thank you to the city for supporting the Marion County Reentry Initiative. It's an outstanding event, but more importantly, it's an outstanding program, meeting people's needs. For 10 years, it's continued to evolve and grow, and is going to continue to do more to help people change their lives. Also, thank you to, thanks to the city for supporting our Kaiser Community Library. The semi-annual book sale was here on Friday and Saturday, and they were very happy with the turnout. A lot of books went out the door, a lot of money from sale of books and also donations to our Kaiser Community Library. And Paula, or one of the, or the library director, Vicky Branmire, will be coming and reporting on that at a later date when they tally everything up. Really, really happy about the support from the community for our community library. Also, I remind everybody, get your library card, Kaiser Community Library, and also the free one we get, it's not free, you already pay for it, may as well get it from CCRLS, which is the Chameca Cooperative Regional Library System. Got it. Coming up, the Kaiser Heritage Foundation Board meets on the 8th, that's tomorrow night, isn't it? Council Reed and I will both be there. SEDCOR, the Strategic Economic Development Corporation Economic Business Forum, is going to talk about hemp on Wednesday. And then from the 10th to the 15th, I will be traveling, so Council President Freeman, if something comes up, they can't reach me, you're going to be in town till the 18th, so we're good. And we have, I'll bring this up later, so that pretty much covers what we got going on. All right, let's go to other business then. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy.
I have a couple of things tonight. The first is just a reminder to all of the people receiving city services, this is the time of year when you want to start to conserve water. Your sewer rate is a flat rate that is set based off of your water consumption during the winter months. Sewer can be about two-thirds of your bill, so if you conserve water now, your sewer rate will go down, and that's a good thing. The other thing to add to the list of awards for the city, I received notice in the last couple of weeks that our 2017-18 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report received the Government Finance Officer Association Certificate for Excellence in Financial Reporting again. This is the 20th year in a row that the city has received this distinction, so.
Wow. Do you have a whole string of them on the wall? I've just kind of 20.
Sadly, I have them all in a drawer. I know.
We need to do something about that. I mean, seriously, that is something to celebrate.
How they just give us these little things that you add to the plaque.
It's more efficient. Michelle.
Other than thanks to everyone who participated in some of the awards given out tonight, I have nothing else.
Trevor.
I have nothing.
Well, I only had one thing, but now I have three. River Road, it's almost done. To kind of explain my frustration with that project, primarily the ADA ramps and the signal work, contractor left signs and cones up after working there. I called the owner of the company myself on Friday and indicated left him a message that that was out there. They'd been there for days. But I had a meeting this morning with him, he said, "Yeah, I got your message on Friday, I was out of town." They picked him up this morning, basically just ignored me all weekend long. So that explains my frustration. They're done. They're pretty much done. There's a punch list items on the traffic signals that need to be done. One of those items will require them to be up in the air on one of the signals, I don't remember which one, but it'll be at 2:00 in the morning, so no, should be no impact to traffic. The rest of the punch list items on the signals, they can do during the day without disruption to traffic or turning signals off, those kinds of things. So just about done. The big toy, the surfacing contractor should be in in probably another week or so to patch the holes. As soon as that's done, we can open the big toy back up until the sails go up. The other thing I want to mention is the temporary traffic signal at the Kaiser Transit Center will be turned on Wednesday morning at 9:00. Okay, that will provide left turn movements into and out of the transit center on the Kaiser Station Boulevard. The signal's temporary because the permanent poles and mast arms were delayed in delivery. They probably aren't going to be here until about December. This is what the transit folks have told me. And at that time, when the, when the final permanent posts, poles, and mast arms get here, the additional left turn lane from Kaiser Station Boulevard on the Lock Haven East Mall will open up. So that's all I have.
Nate.
Yeah, Council Parsons.
Yeah, they have, they need to pave around the manholes. They have a couple panels of sidewalk to replace that were not poured to the standards, to the slopes. That's going to happen Thursday and Friday while school's out. And then they'll be done, except for planting arborita on the property we acquired right away from on the corner.
And I've got one, I wanted to pass on some kudos. There was a water main break on the corner next to my street, and my neighbor, I got back from League of Oregon Cities, I pulled in, and there was water just gushing down the street, and I saw him standing out there, and I'm like, oh my, what happened? He said that when he called the city, the people who came out were, were great, they were very helpful, they got on it right away, and the project, they're still working on the side of the road, but they got it patched up. But it was just the customer service that my neighbors was very impressed with, and they all wanted to pass that on.
Thank you. I'll share that with the staff. Thank you very much. Anyone else for Bill?
So just wanted to pass on, first of all, thank you for your work on the RCOD. A lot of work, and I appreciate all of your efforts in trying to understand it and move forward. And the only other thing I wanted to pass on is we are, well, a couple of things, truly a couple of. One is we are continuing to work with Mr. Roothouse, representing his works with the tribes in Area D, and trying to work out some details on how they can move forward in a limited way. Their plans are to actually revise the master plan, but the existing master plan gives them authority to proceed to a limited amount. So we're working with them through some of those issues. The other thing, I wanted to share the good news cautiously, but we are working with a developer on the site that is next to Sonic, and they are intending to construct a true mixed-use building, residential above, commercial below. And I'm pretty dang excited. So it's going to be, it's going to be a good example to see that we can do mixed-use in Kaiser. And from the discussion, I think we'll be all proud of it. Wanted to kind of share that good news.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I attended the Oregon City Attorneys Association meeting in conjunction with the league meeting. If you didn't see any attorneys there, that's because they relegated us to Sun River, because they didn't want any attorneys by the elected officials. But in all, in all seriousness, several years ago, the league's annual meeting got so big that most of those venues are not big enough to hold all the league ones plus the city attorneys. So, so I was at that, was very interesting information, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And thank you very much. As I understand it too, that this year was the largest attendance at the League of Oregon Cities Conference ever. So that was just, it was huge, and I think a lot of it has to do with, you know, more and more scholarships available for people to attend, but also people are coming back with the revitalization of the league. So yeah, there wouldn't have been room for you there this year either. And speaking of which, I do want to thank the council. Just, it was very special. I know Dan Kohler wrote a nomination letter also for the James Richards Award, and apparently a number of you also signed on, and that absolutely blew me away. But I got to tell you, it's, it's an absolute privilege and honor to work with you all, because we get to do this cool stuff for our, our community. So from there, written communications, I do have three items. One is a lengthy letter asking, it's from Mr. Charles B. Keane, asking that we enact a city ordinance to go with current Oregon revised statutes to prohibit or to require signage for the consumption of alcohol during religious ceremonies, specifically meaning so forth. And I just mentioned that he wrote a letter, he did not come tonight, he said he was going to. I'll just pass that on, because this is something that is not a city function.
I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Keane in the lobby for a while, and I directed him to a couple of places I think that he can get better traction with, with that item, since as you mentioned, this is not an area that the city regulates, so.
All right. So I'll pass that letter to you. Thank you for following up with him. Then also, this is from Chariots. Dear Mayor Clark, thank you for your advocacy and ongoing support for public transportation service in the Mid Willamette Valley. We appreciate you joining us to celebrate the largest service expansion in Chariots history on September 7th. The overwhelming response from the community has been humbling. Our first day of Saturday service provided about 6,400 rides. For context, we average about 14,000 rides a day during the week. We will continue to monitor ridership until we get a feel for what our average ridership will be after the free rides end of September. Should you need additional information regarding our plans for enhanced service, please feel free to contact me by phone or email. I look forward to keeping in contact with you in the future. Ian Davidson, President of the Board of Directors for Chariots. It was a great community event, and it's been very gratifying to see people waiting for the buses on Saturday and buses coming to get them, so they can get to work and get to places that they want to and need to go. We received this letter from the Insurance Commissioner, Oregon Division of Financial Regulation, and I did not get in time to issue a proclamation, but we still need to be cognizant anyway. Dear Mayor and City Council, last year, more than 846,000 acres were burned, and about 4,000 Oregonians had to evacuate their homes. This year's wildfire season is far from over, this was written a month ago, is over now, which means the time to prepare is now. September is National Preparedness Month, a time of year to get ready for all types of disasters. Fires, earthquakes, floods, tornadoes, and winter storms are just a few of the reasons to build an emergency kit and plan an escape route. Those steps are essential to preparation, but two are equally important and often overlooked, creating a home inventory and reviewing insurance coverage. Having the right insurance coverage and up-to-date inventory are critical to financial resiliency. This importance is highlighted by the fact that National Preparedness Month is being kicked off with Insurance Week, and that was at the beginning of September, although it's never too late. The Oregon Financial Division, the Oregon Division of Financial Regulation invites you to join in efforts to help Oregonians protect their property and recover from disaster by declaring the first week of September as Home Inventory Week. It's easy to get involved, and they have a website, dfr.organ.gov. Prepare now to get a draft proclamation, flyers, et cetera. So if there are civic organizations that you belong to that you would like to share this information, this will be available to you. And this is from Andrew Stolfi, Insurance Commissioner, Oregon Division of Financial Regulation. And their flyers talk about prepared, not scared, and Preparedness Month. I will leave that there. Agenda input, October 14th, we canceled that work session, but now we have created one on October 22nd, and that's going to be at McNary Oaks, that's Tuesday. Enough of us responded that with an interest of touring the place, it turned into a quorum and a work session. So we'll be there at 5:30. Okay. October 21st, at 7:00 PM, we will meet in regular session. October 28th, 7:00 PM, we will have a work session on emergency preparedness. And then on November 4th, 7:00 PM, we will meet in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Council, Council President Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I neglected to let everyone know I will not be here on Monday, October 21st. I will be traveling for work.
All right. Thank you. And I believe, Council Kohler, you will be away on the 21st as well? Okay. Okay. So the, I think the work session also, you'll be gone? Okay.
Yeah, I won't, I won't get work neither.
Okay, so you'll both be gone for those two. All right. Appreciate that. Anything else for the good of the order? Thanks for hanging in there. The time is 10:10, and we are adjourned.